Yeah, so what we do. We're... And on the... Up there and hear everybody up there. And one of us. Yeah. So the first thing that they'll do after they do the practice of the... And I have to get off. You can do that instead. You just basically... Like for me, I'm in a jail room. We're gonna be... I'll be... Come out and support the families. One day at the memorial. If not... I had to go to the microphone. Like two panics. I try to make the person that comes in and do it. It's not.
What do you mean? You know?
Yeah. No, no, no. Do it as soon as it's at the end. Take a picture when I'm done with it. That woman will take a picture. You know? So what do you think? Yeah. If you can't back your case, it's not unusual.
Community development?
No.
Let me see if I can put it on my laptop. I'll tell them what I want. Sign in.
I'll call this meeting to order on Monday, May the 21st, 2018. Want to welcome everyone. Very glad to have with us tonight Pastor Brian Dowing of Oakdale Church of God at 1631 Cooper Lake Road. I saw him come running in. And he came up here and you were like five minutes early, dude. So he's gonna come forward. I didn't mean to say dude. That means I like you, so. He's gonna give us our invocation and also lead us in the place of the flag. So would everyone please rise?
Let's pray. Father, thank you so much for this day. We thank you for divine ordering of our steps and for your sovereign hand leading and guiding. And Lord, for providential relationships and providential moments and circumstances that take place in and around our lives. And Lord, we know you establish leadership. And Lord, we thank you for those you've established and we pray your blessings over them. And we pray your blessings over the wisdom and guidance of the community that leads and directs all of us, Lord, and the workings and how we all work together, Lord, in your ways. And so, Father, we pray for this evening. We pray your blessings over that you'd strengthen us and lead us, giving us guidance and direction that we may all become who you've called and created us to be. In Jesus' name, my Savior. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if anyone's looking for a new church or wants to change, 1631 Cooper Lake Road is where the Oakdale Church of God is. Thank you so much for coming tonight and give us the invocation. Item two is agenda changes, and I don't think we have any. We'll go into the mayor oil report. We got two items there, but before we address those two items, I want to remind everybody there's an election tomorrow. The polls open from seven to seven. And I always give, if you're a candidate running for any position, I will give you the opportunity to briefly come up and say who you are, what you're running for. No speeches, but if you're running for any political office, I'll give you that opportunity now to come forward and say anything that you want to.
I'm Alex Bakri. I'm running for council in Ward Six tomorrow. And I'd like to just say, for the last 15 years, I've been coming to these council meetings and speaking on issues. And I find that the other candidates that are just showing up in this, now that this election's coming up, I know I filed over 20 open record requests on issues. And I just find that if you're gonna be informed to help the people in your ward, you gotta have knowledge of the issues and what's going on. And when the candidates just... Where were their, to me, civil obligations before, I mean, in politics, before this election? I don't see it. So it's, in order to inform the people in your ward, you have to be informed to yourself. That's the only way you're gonna answer questions and know what's going on. And I feel I'm the best qualified to, that I put all the time in knowing the issues versus these other people that are brand new and have not followed city politics in the past years. Thank you.
Anyone else running for public office? Okay. Item A is 2018-230 proclamation in recognition of Memorial Day Poppy Weekend, May the 25th through 28, 2018. I know there's some poppy ladies here. If you'll come forward, I'm gonna ask council member... Uh, council member, you about to get your dollars, your five dollars out. Corky Wells will read the proclamation and present that to y'all. And then I'd like to be the first one to get a poppy after I make a donation.
That'll work.
Thank you. Corky?
Thank you. I take one of yours, Miss McGee. Thank you. I'll read the proclamation and come down and present it to you at that point. Proclamation by the mayor of the city of Smyrna, Memorial Day Poppy Weekend. Whereas America is the land of the freedom, preserved and protected willingly and freely by citizens, citizen soldiers, and whereas millions who have answered the call to arms have died in the field of battle, and whereas a nation at peace must be reminded of the price of war and the debt owed to those who have died in war, and whereas the red poppy has been designated as a symbol of sacrifices of lives in all wars, and whereas the American Legion Auxiliary has pledged to remind America annually of this debt through the distribution of the memorial flower. Now, therefore, I, A. Max Bacon, Mayor of the city of Smyrna, do hereby proclaim May 25th through May 28th, 2018, as Memorial Day Poppy Weekend, and ask that all citizens pay tribute to those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the name of freedom by wearing the memorial poppy. In witness whereof, I have hearing to set my hand and cause to the seal of the city of Smyrna to be affixed upon this 21st day of May in the year of our Lord, 2018. A. Max Bacon.
Anything y'all want to say while he's bringing that down?
Yes, I'm Amy Lattermilk, representing the Ladies Auxiliary for American Legion Post 160. And we just want to remind you folks that we will be out at both Kroger locations in Smyrna this weekend, as well as the Walmart on the East West Connector, Saturday and Sunday, doing poppy distribution in the community. And then we'll also be at the memorial on Monday. Thank you.
All that here is 20.
Yeah. All God gave to me to do.
Right. I gave y'all warning to get your money out. Item 3B on the mayor oil report is 2018-209 Smyrna Citizens Academy graduating class ceremony and presentation of certificates. I'm gonna ask that, ask her Yeoman or who.
I'll do it. It's something about poppy.
And Tammy Sadler. Tammy Sadler Jones. This is the very first Smyrna Citizens Academy. We have had great success with the police academy and the fire academy and had the opportunity to meet with these folks when they, their very first meeting. And I got to spend some time with them this evening before the council meeting. And from what I gather, they seem to really enjoy this and they've probably, they know a lot more about running government than I do. But I'm gonna let Ashley take this and go. And we thank y'all for giving us your time.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes.
Yes. So thank you. This is, like he said, this is our inaugural citizens academy for the city of Smyrna. It's been a great learning experience for all of them and for myself as well. They got to see a behind the scenes look at all of the city departments. They've got to meet all the elected officials, meet department heads, and they've also just learned ways to get engaged in the community. So now they can definitely be better advocates as residents for the city of Smyrna. So I'm really proud of them. They've been such a great group. And also, I'm really thankful for the department heads for their help. So we have our graduates that went through all eight sessions, and I will call them out by name. The first one is absent, but one of our graduate's names is Jeff Carter. Then Katina Cunningham. Gladys Dancy. Britt Devani. Oh, by the way, stay up here so we can take a group picture afterwards. Patty Farthing. Alicia Glover. Anna Humnicki. Patty Lawson. Thomas Lee, who also couldn't be here tonight. Mary Ellen Leonard.
Let me have Tom's.
Cedric Lumston. And Janice Lumston. Jean Manke is also a graduate who could not be here tonight. Maggie McGarretty. Jekyllina Mitchienzi. David Monroe. Paula Moon. Jessica Olson. Danette Richardson. Teresa Watley. And last but not least, Kathy Young. So congratulations to our 2018 Smyrna Citizens Academy graduates.
After Scott takes a picture, I'm gonna ask if the group, if there's a spokesperson from the group that would like to say anything. Go ahead, take the picture.
One, two, three. One, two, three. Mayor, you're in the background.
I know, I know. Is there like a Kathy?
I love speaking to council. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ashley. We really, I think, hopefully I am speaking for everyone. We didn't plan this, but we appreciate all the time that you put into this to coordinate it. We appreciate the support that the whole city gave to this effort. All the department heads that presented to us were really informative. They made finance just come alive. They made, you know, all the things that we learned, I think, I hope we've talked about that we're gonna take something away from this and do something with it. So we just appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
I got one question. There's like 90% women ladies, which is not bad, but, you know, women are taking over the world, and that's okay.
This is true.
Hadn't you noticed that?
But we do appreciate y'all taking the time and all the effort Ashley put into it and all the help that staff... Was there anything that y'all wanted to find out about that you didn't?
I think we found out that Smyrna is a really great place to live. We're so impressed with every single class and every single department head that just gave us such good information and showed such enthusiasm for the city.
Good day.
Yeah, really appreciate it.
Yep, that makes us feel good up here that they're, because they give us a hard time, as they should. Thank y'all. Go ahead. Wait a minute, yeah. We have got a number of positions, Parks and Recreation Commission, which by charter is probably one of the most powerful commissions that we have that...
Happen to have a vacancy.
And we have some vacancies on that. So if you're interested in that, we can sign up right now. It, but if you're interested in that, staff can give you, Richard Garland is a retro Parks and Recreation. He can give you more information about that. But it would be a great, it'd be something I'm sure that y'all would be interested in. But thank y'all so much for participating and we're glad that y'all did what y'all did, so. Thank y'all. All right. Item four is land issues, zonings and annexations. Item May 2017-314, public hearing only. Zoning request, Z14-014, rezoning from neighborhood shopping in O and I to MU conditional for the development of a mixed use project with 310 multifamily units, a hotel, 15,000 square foot of retail, and 80,000 square feet of office space. 8.7 acres land lots, 880 and 881, 2800 and 2810 Spring Road, West Pan Investors Acquisition LLC. This is a three-part process. We'll have the public hearing on the zoning first, and then we'll have the annexation, then we'll have the final zoning. I'll ask that Ms. Tammy Sadler Jones give us the background.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. West Plan Investors Acquisitions LLC is requesting to annex and rezone the property at 2800 and 2810 Spring Road from neighborhood shopping in Smyrna and office institutional in Cobb County to mixed use conditional for the development of a mixed use development consisting of a hotel and office building, a retail slash office building, and a multifamily development. The zoning request was heard by the planning and zoning board at the April 9th, 2018 meeting, and it was recommended for denial by a vote of six to zero. Our community development staff recommends denial of the request. Community development director Ken Sudrith is here to provide you with some additional background information.
Is the applicant is here? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here who's in opposition to, or that would like to make any public comment concerning this zoning request? Let the record show there is none. This is in Mr. Norton's district, and I'm sure he'll want Mr. Ken Sudrith to come up and make a presentation, and then we'll hear from the applicant.
Thank you, Mayor. As Ms. Jones said, this is coming to you with a denial from the planning commission. It was unanimous, six oh. Recommendation, staff had also recommended denial of this request. If you look on the screen, you see that it is off of Spring Road. It is down towards the Cobb Parkway. It's actually, it's two tracks of land here, one of which is in the city, the one that's on Spring Road. And then the larger track behind the first track is in the county. The first track, we normally associate it being with the Chin Chin Restaurant, so that people understand exactly where this is. Right behind that little strip shopping center are three office buildings, and that the applicant owns both parcels. From a future land use point of view, this is the area that's in the city, as well as the area in Cobb, are both proposed for a regional activity center. So there's no adjustment there other than to bring in another piece of property to it if indeed y'all approve that request. You can see the adjoining properties are all regional activity center as well. This is the proposed site plan. I'll start with the multifamily section of it. It is located basically in the center of the track, consisting of 310 units. You can see on the north side of that is a parking deck. There's a hotel proposed that is up towards Spring Road, but it will range anywhere from six stories to 12 stories, and hence ranges from 140 to 250 rooms with underground parking. There's a two-story, 15,000 square foot retail building that's 7,500 square feet on each floor that's up towards Spring Road as well. And then the final land use is an office building consisting of 80,000 square feet, which would be three to four stories in height. There are two right in, right out access points off of Spring Road. They are highlighted on the screen with a yellow box. And there's a full access drive on, on Spring Hill Parkway off of the rear of this property. There are 10 variances being requested. I'm not necessarily gonna go through each and every one of them. They're all in your reports, but you can see on the screen that staff is supportive of only four of the 10, and I will get into that a little bit later on. This is the proposed look of the multifamily building. This is the proposed hotel building. This shows a 12-story building, just to give you a point of reference and not a six. Proposed retail building. You can see the apartment buildings in the rear of this slide. Then proposed office building. Spring Road LCI Master Plan, which we had adopted just a little over a year ago, is referenced in our report, and this just shows you what the plan, in essence, talked about for this area. Pictures of the subject property. And of the adjacent parcels. Community development, as well as the planning commission, recommends denial of the requested annexation and rezoning from NS and OI to MU conditional for the following reasons. One is that the proposed site plan does not meet the goals in the town of the Spring Road LCI. As I referenced, there's 10 variances. Staff is only supportive of four of them. In general, the other six variances deal with moving the buildings further off Spring Road, eliminating the requirement for having a consistent building edge along the public sidewalk, allowing parking between the right of way and the retail building and hotel, as well as reducing landscape whis along Spring Road. Two is currently designed, the proposed uses within the site are isolated and independent of one another. Current design does not encourage the essential interaction between the uses to make a successful mixed use development due to building orientation, appearance, ease of pedestrian and traffic flow through the site and the site topography. In addition, the elevations that were submitted for the proposal do not actually reflect what is shown on the proposed site plan. The hotel sketch and office photo appear to be taken from another project and have not been adjusted to reflect actual site conditions. The retail building reflects an outdoor patio in the front of it, which does not actually exist on the site plan. The site is really not a, is not master plan, but rather a collection of individual uses placed within the project. The applicant states that they will be the master developer, but each proposed land use area will be sold to different owners who will also have a say into what that final product looks like and how it operates. This, along with the general design and the plan and the actual site topography, increase the potential individuality of each product. The ranges in the building height and number of rooms for the proposed hotel are not only different from those submitted for the DRI, but also provide such a wide option that a minimum, that at a minimum, two different types of hotel could possibly be developed. A six-story, 140-room hotel is obviously different in appearance and scale of services than a 12-story, 250-unit hotel. As a reminder, the LCI study suggests that a selected service type of establishment somewhat upgraded from a conventional limited service hotel is possible in the study area. Community development does not believe we have enough information to determine what type of hotel is actually being proposed, and as such is not supportive. The phasing of this project is also a concern. The first phase will be the proposed apartments and associated parking deck. What and when other phases occur is only tied to the issuance of a final certificate of occupancy for the apartments once a request for the issuance of development permits for the hotel, retail and office components are submitted to the city. However, the act of just submitting for permits doesn't ensure that the permits are actually used, nor that any construction will take place. The proposed plan prevents concerns with respect to fire safety and accessibility, as well as storm water management. And with regard to that, there is no information submitted on that last piece. Finally, the proposed site design negatively and permanently impacts the city's opportunity to achieve the officially adopted LCI master plan. The opportunity costs associated with the approval of the development are significant with respect to future development south of Spring Road between Cobb Parkway and Cumberland Boulevard. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Happy to clarify any of staff's recommendations here.
Any questions of Ms. Sudrith? Thank you.
Ms. Sudrith, I did have one question. In the, what I'm going to say was the southwest corner of the, of the project, there was an office, 80,000 square foot of office space down there. But I didn't see or didn't hear anything about any parking for that facility. But I didn't see or didn't hear anything about any parking for that facility. Was there anything?
That's correct. There's nothing referenced in the material that was submitted to us, so staff can only assume that they intend for that to be underground parking. But we do not know that, Mr. Welch. It's just not addressed.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, Ken. When you were reading some of those things, you mentioned the DRI. And I just wondered if you could tell us what that is, or the audience? Thanks.
DRI stands for, it's an acronym for Development of Regional Impact. There are certain thresholds that the state has established. And if you hit those thresholds, then it has to go through a review with the Atlanta Regional Commission and with the Georgia Regional Transportation Authority, also known as Greta. They're looking at it from a transportation perspective and connectivity issues. They're not looking at it from necessarily a zoning. They're not commenting on, well, the city should approve or not approve. They're commenting that if we do approve, these are additional suggestions regarding transportation issues that they would encourage us to do.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions, Mr. Sudrith? Thank you, Ken. We'll hear from the applicant now. Mr. Sams, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, for the record, my name is Garvis Sams. I'm with the law firm of Sams, Lark, and Huff in Bally, and represent West Plant Acquisition LLC regarding this application for rezoning, and application also for annexation. I have with me tonight Mr. Rob Carter of West Plant, who is seated right back there, so at the appropriate time. If you've got any questions, either Mr. Carter or I can respond to any questions that you may have. This is a, this is a project that has a long history. I can only see, no, I can't see. You actually, one person on the council that was involved in being a council member when this first came up with, this was in, prior to Mr. Norton's district ward, it was in Ms. Pritchett's. And so conversations with Ms. Pritchett and with the owner at that time, who is now in bankruptcy, were effectuated. And plans began to be devised, not only with respect to this property, but also the assemblage of other properties in the area, too. This is not a density grab, it's not an annexation grab. It's a strategic expansion of the city boundaries.
Not that that's a bad thing.
No, it's a good thing. And that's why I use the word strategic, meaningfully strategic. And so we understand that. And by the same token, I also understand that that's not a tacit admission that you intend on annexing SunTrust for the Battery. It's a joke. Anyway, this is, as Ken said, the front of this property zone, NS, in the city. The balance of this is owned ONI Emerson Center. It's widely known. It's readily identifiable from I-285, where there's approximately a quarter million cars a day. So as a part of the strategy we laid forth at the very beginning was to optimize the visibility of the site, which has about a 40-to-60-foot fall on it from Spring back down to 285, in terms of identification for major users of all 80,000 square feet of that office. The discussions ensued through the balance of Ms. Pritchett's term and to Mr. Norton's term as the ward councilperson. And the development company which owned this property, Neilhan Developers, went into bankruptcy. My client, West Plant, became interested in the development during that period of time and purchased it. And when you go through bankruptcy to purchase a piece of property, you don't just sign a contract and go to a closing. There are hearings before the trustee that's assigned to the case. And of course, the trustee in bankruptcy for the debtor, which in this case was Neilhan Developers, has to approve that order. So when that order was approved back in March of this year, it attached to it as an exhibit, a site plan, very similar to the site plan you see today, except with respect to the deviation from the architectural style and composition, which has been highly upgraded, and with respect to tweaks, such as outdoor patios and offices and things of that nature. So, but we've been hobbled somewhat since my client purchased this property in May for $7.2 million. And that's just a matter of public record. That's how much the property cost, and that's how much they paid. And West Plant does own this property and has some significant and definitive plans on it. So in July of 2017, we submitted an application for rezoning, but we were tabled because the city is obligated with developments of regional impact, as Wilkinson, if they exceed certain thresholds, either in terms of the mix of the use or the overall square footage of various components. And it depends on whether it's in a community, regional, or neighborhood activity center. So this exceeded those thresholds. And that was a process that began roughly in July, August, and then completed early to late fall of 2017. So it was tabled for quite a period of time. But we achieved from that equally supportive recommendations. It's a notice of decision from the Georgia Regional Transportation Authority and a regional review finding by ARC. So Mr. Sudrith seemed to diminish the importance of that, but the reason for going through that is because this is in a regional activity center. These are regional issues. The thoroughfares here are regional in terms of I-285, I-75, Cobb Parkway, and Spring Road, which of course is an arterial. This is within, and is one of the four quadrants. So this is a very key intersection with SunTrust and Battery on one, Cumberland Galleria on the other, Cumberland Mall on the other one. Of course, the SunTrust Battery was projected at a $400-million price tag. I think once all is said and done and everything's added, that's probably going to be closer to $1 billion. That's the Braves, as you well know. So this property, as well as those other three quadrants, are located in what's commonly known as the Cumberland Core. And you're going to see a lot of development, a lot of intensity, a lot of height, vertical height, and a lot of activity within the next decade and beyond. This is a $100-million project, what we have before you tonight. This is not an arbitrary figure that was picked out. This is done with economic indicators and core studies. And we think this will serve as an architectural and aesthetic mixed-use development, which will be an enhancement to this robust area of the city and of the county. We have, as a part of this process, Cobb County has to weigh in on any DRI or any annexation for that matter. Cobb County has weighed in, and much like ARC and much like Greta, they had no objection. The county has issued a letter of no objection to you. We have the support of Greta and of course ARC, as I mentioned. The components are literally proposed like they are for a good reason. When we filed this, and your director knew that we were hamstrung, for lack of a better word, by the order that existed. He said, "The city wants to see maximum density." We showed a six-story hotel. We wanted to give the city the range, so between six and 12 stories, to optimize the set of circumstances. This is not a dual-brand hotel, as articulated. It's a single-brand hotel with structured parking. So that range from six to 12, or 140 to 250 keys, is there for the city's edification and to be a recipient of market-driven indicators in terms of what actually happens on this property. And by the way, it's a Marriott flag for the hotel. It's not unknown. The five-to-six multifamily, five-to-six-story multifamily building for 310 apartments, these are Class A, highly amenitized luxury apartments. We know that we have to be the highest price, certainly on this side of Cobb Parkway, to be able to compete with what Pollock Shores has built and successfully have purchased now over in the Battery. And when I say highly amenitized, I'm talking about everything that brings it to the price points that will just come this shy of meeting with the Pollock Shores' price points are. We have 10,000 square feet of retail and amenities and leasing space within the multifamily building. We have a three-to-four-story office building with, as Ken mentioned, 800,000 square feet with extensive and prominent fringes and visibility on I-285. And by the way, we told you about the topo on the site and how it falls. We had a meeting last week, last Friday, in Ken's office, along with Rusty and other members of your staff and representatives from the Georgia Department of Transportation, who will be taking a strip-taking along the southern side of this property contiguous to I-285. And I bring that up because it doesn't materially affect this property in terms of encroaching in or having an adverse impact. This is for the Managed Lanes Project, which has been in effect for the past eight to nine years. The acquisition date is approximately 2023, with the completion date in 2028 for this GDOT project. They've got an upper end and an other end. We're on the upper end for the Managed Lanes. All this is going to entail, in terms of our site, is the construction of a 10-foot wall and giving of about 15 feet of right-of-way to GDOT, which we preliminarily have agreed to. This also improves, as you saw on the site plan, a two-story retail building, 7,500 on each floor, for a total of 15,000 square feet. We have the positioning, as you saw on the site plan, or I hope you saw, both on Spring Road and on our property overlying, overflying I-285. This is pedestrian-aerial connection. You have the pedestrian-aerial connection, just being displaced and rebuilt, where the Silver Comet Trail goes over the I-285 corridor. You have the one that was built from Cobb Galleria to the Battery-SunTrust. You also have one that is proposed, as I understand it, by the Braves to connect to the, what I'll call, the Nally site. And then you have the two that we propose for pedestrian aerial connectivity across Spring and then across I-285 from our site. Which, if you see the Managed Lanes and the width of that, you can understand what an undertaking that's going to be. The LCI study, it's interesting. That was adopted the month before we purchased the property, which is good, because we knew about the LCI study. We hit as many markers as we could on that. Let me tell you what your staff has not told you, but what is in your zoning analysis, if you had a chance to read it, say, "The proposal will..." This is quotes from staff. "Proposal will permit a use that is suitable in view of the development of adjacent and nearby properties." The staff says, "This zoning will not adversely affect the existing use or usability of adjacent and nearby properties." Staff says, "The development is not expected to cause any burden to existing street networks or existing or proposed infrastructure or transportation facilities." The staff says, "The rezoning is in conformity with the city's future land use map, with the county's future land use map, being within a regional activity center within both jurisdictions." The staff says, "The proposed development and the proposed rezoning may enhance architectural standards and aesthetics." I would challenge you to take the word "may" out of that in looking at the architectural renderings and elevations that we've given you, which I think are stunning, without a doubt. Staff says, "The zoning proposal will not create a nuisance of being incompatible with uses in the area." And it said, "The zoning proposal will not, may not negatively affect adjoining property, general neighborhood, and other uses." All those criteria, called the Steinberg criteria, and it's the law in the state of Georgia. It's what jurisdictions, whether they're cities or unincorporated counties, have to follow those in order to be square with what the law dictates that you review and use. The only point upon which this proposal deviates or differentiates from the LCI has to do with interior community open space, connectivity between the various components of this site, and interparcial connectivity, period. Interestingly, when this property was purchased, we had high ambitions for this. And we attempted to get the, I think it's Applebee's that's next door. It's an older couple in California that own that. It's a great profit center for them. Ultimately, we expect them to come to the table to add to that. As part of this process, Wendy's came into the city. It's not a part of what we develop or would develop, but it sets the tone for strategic expansion of the city boundaries, which is exactly what you're doing. While this is pending, we submitted a comprehensive letter of agreeable stipulations and conditions in March, March 26 of 2018. It's a 13-page stipulation letter that addresses everything, and including tying in vertical construction on the site to the issuance of COs with respect to the multifamily component. We can take that one step further tonight, rather than just the application for permits for vertical construction on the retail component. We can agree that concurrently with the issuance of COs on the multifamily component, we will commence construction on vertical improvements as well. So that's one of the differences between now and what Mr. Sudrith had told you. And we'll agree, of course, to tie in that vertical construction to the issuance of COs. To have a classic and distinctive mixed-use development, if it's anchored with a multifamily component, which this will be in the center of it, then what you've got to do is build that to attract the retail, to attract the right kind of hotel. You don't want, some of the hotels that you've seen and within the sub-area of the city, you don't want a Suites Hotel with school buses pulling up in front of it. You want retail that's primary, not secondary or tertiary to what you have in the Battery. So certain things have to happen, and they have to be understood from a commonsensical perspective. And you are all professionals in your own right, but you're not asked, when you take this dais, to leave your common sense at the door. You're asked to create a balancing test between, you know, what's fair and appropriate for the property owner and what's fair, appropriate, prosperous, and ingenious, we think, for the city. So with respect to the regional aspects of this, with respect to Cobb County's support of this, and certainly not objection to it, and with respect to the recommendations we've received from Greta and ARC, and because we deviate in three minor respects from the LCI, which by the way is a study, it's not a zoning map, we do respectfully request that you depart from the recommendations of your staff, most surely from your recommendations of your Planning Commission. So with that being said, Mr. Mayor, I'm available for any questions or respond to any type of inquiries.
Any questions, Mr. Sams?
Yes, sir, I have a question. I know West Plant is primarily apartment developers. Who, you know, you're talking about the other structures coming out of the ground. Who have they partnered with? Who have they identified as the builders of the office and retail? I know that's not their specialty.
No, it's not. We've identified Marriott as the hotel. The retail, obviously, market-driven. But we've associated Jeff Fuqua with, you know, as a mixed-use developer, and who also partnered with Pollock Shores and others to create the retail component in the Battery. Truth be told, they snagged up the premier, the best. Because of the decision that was made by the city to eliminate median break here, many retailers look at this as a lost-leader site in terms of maneuverability and being able to get in and out, with no ability to be able to go back to the west from the site without using the sub-primary access point on Spring Hill Parkway. So we're emblazoned with that a little bit as well. We would love to see a median break here. But we understand the thought and consideration that you put into this when it was just a little strip center with NS and Emerson, which was dying on the vine as an office, outdated, functionally obsolete office park. That's a long way of answering your question, but we have discussed it with Mr. Fuqua, who I think is the premier retail developer in the state of Georgia.
Any other questions, Mr. Sams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Councilman Norton?
Ken, you got any final comments, or you good? Mr. Norton?
So there have been, I don't know how many meetings, probably six or eight, Mr. Sams, between you, your client, Ken Sudrith, and myself over the last, I don't know, how many months, 18 months, however long we've been doing this?
Two years, probably.
Two years. And I appreciate your time and effort. And I appreciate your time and effort in this. You know, for all of the reasons outlined in the staff recommendations, I don't support this plan, you know, with any development here in the city. We've got to give it utmost attention and to detail and make a decision. We only get one chance to get these right. And this, this area specifically, with its proximity to the Battery and all of the opportunities that come with that, again, we get one chance to get it right.
Before you go any further, Derek, we need to close the public hearing portion of the zoning request, and then the next item on the agenda is the approval of the annexation. So I think we need to move to Item B, which is approval of ordinance 2017-10, annexation request, 100% of the owners requesting annexation of all tracts of land lying and being in landlot 881, 17th District, 2nd Section, Cobb County, Georgia, a total of 5.9-acre tract, being known as 2800 and 2810, Spring Road, Smyrna, Georgia. Effective date of this annexation will be June the 1st, and the property will be part of Ward 1. This is all part of the annexation and rezoning. So that's the next issue we need to address. So I'll turn this over to you to address the annexation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I'll just continue. You know, I think there's been a lot of work put into this, I think we've made some progress, but I don't think we're there yet. I don't think this is the right thing for that spot. I think we can do better there. I think we're obligated, as Smyrna citizens, to do a little bit better there. I don't like it that there's, the hotel could be 6 to 12 stories. I don't like that variability of 140 to 250 rooms. I mean, what are we really talking about here? I don't like that each part of the development is, as Ken said, quote, "isolated and independent of each other." I don't like it that there's no guarantee that they'll all come out of the ground at the same time. Yeah, I fear that the apartments will get built, and then maybe there won't be the market for the office, or there won't be the market for the retail, and that might not get built. So then what happens? Well, maybe it's proposed more apartments. I just am uncomfortable with that, and I don't like the fact that there are 10 variances requested that staff only agrees with four of. So if there's no comments or questions from my colleagues, I'm going to make a motion to deny the annexation, Item 4B, and...
Mr. Norton, as you know, I would be probably chastised greatly by opposing an annexation. As much as I love having that part of this, of the area in the city, I'm going to support your motion.
Thank you.
Much as I hate it.
Second. Got motion of second to deny the annexation request. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Let's approve 6-0 to deny. I'll ask Jeffrey Tucker, our city attorney, on the Item C, the final vote, do we have to vote on that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Part of the, in the annexation request, there's a, there was a request for annexation, but the rezoning request itself applies to a parcel that is already in the city of Smyrna. So the council needs to consider the rezoning request as to the parcel that is already part of the city of Smyrna.
All right, so Item C, 2018-243, is the final vote zoning request, Z17-014, rezoning from NS to OI to MU Conditional for the development of a mixed-use project with 310 multifamily units, a hotel, 15,000 square feet of retail, 80,000 square feet of office space on 8.7-acre landlot 880 and 881, 2800 and 2810, Spring Road, West Plan Investor Acquisition LLC. Mr. Norton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Jeffrey said, because we've denied the annexation, the project is, the part that exists in the city, we still have to act on that, even though the project itself wouldn't work without the annexation. So at this point, I'll make a motion to deny Item 4C, 2018-243, the zoning request, Z17-014, rezoning from NS to OI to MU Conditional for the development of a mixed-use project with 310 multifamily units, a hotel, 15,000 square feet of retail space, and 80,000 square feet of office space, 8.7 acres, landlots 880 and 881, 2800 and 2810, Spring Road, West Plan Investors Acquisitions LLC.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Again, I just want to be of record that while I appreciate those people who are a part of this tract already in the city and the desire of the applicant and others to be a part of the city, I want to welcome the moment when we can complete this loop and bring this tract to its full potential in the city. As articulated by staff, as articulated by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and now from this council with the denial, we all who have worked on this, and I appreciate the applicant, the team that has worked on it, we look forward to the day when we get a viable solution that has broad support to give this part of Smyrna the fullest opportunity for maximum success that we know shall be in our future. We're excited about the development of that node from the Nally site to this site to the area. I want to support anything and everything that shows the best face of Smyrna, Cobb County, and to the world, this region. I know that we're close to doing that, and I look forward to being supportive of that at that time.
I take that as a second, to deny for denial. Andrew, second, okay, all right. All right, got a motion of second to deny. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Let's approve 6-0 to deny, and I too hope that we can work things out, and y'all come back before us with a plan that we can work with you. Item D, 2018-162, public hearing zoning request, Z18-006, rezoning from OI to RM12 Conditional for 23 townhomes at a density of 11.39 units per acre, 2.02-acre landlot 666, 2881, 2885, Elmwood Drive, the Woodbury Group. Is the applicant here?
Yes, sir.
Oh, you were just here?
Yes, I know, I'm much happier than that.
Ms. Tammy Sattler-Jones, please give us the background on this.
Woodbury Group LLC is requesting to rezone the subject properties on the east side of Elmwood Drive from Office Institutional to RM12 Conditional for the development of a 23-unit townhome subdivision at a density of 11.39 units per acre. The zoning request was heard by the Planning and Zoning Board at the April 9, 2018, meeting, and it was recommended for approval by a vote of 6 to 0 with conditions. Community Development recommends approval of the requested rezoning from OI to RM12 Conditional, and with conditions. And Rusty Martin, our senior planner, is here to give you some additional background information.
All right, this is a, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that's in opposition to, that would like to make any public comment concerning this zoning request? All right, let the record show there is none. This is to Ms. Bluestein's. I'm sure she'll want Mr. Martin to make a presentation.
Yes, Mr. Martin, if you could give us some background.
All right, good evening. As Ms. Sattler-Jones stated, this is a request from the Woodbury Group, PNZ, recommended approval by a vote of 6-0. This property is located immediately south of Jockle Sporting Goods on Elmwood Drive. As you can see on the zoning vicinity map, it is bounded on the north side by commercial properties that is owned, General Commercial, by an apartment complex on the, on the, on the east and south side that's owned RM12, and then by a condominium development that's got a zoning of RTD. The applicant is requesting to rezone this property from OI to RM Conditional. Their proposal is to build 23 new single-family townhomes. I'll go over the design of that subdivision here shortly. This site is currently zoned on our, or has a future land use designation on our, in our comprehensive plan, a medium-high-density residential, which is up to 10 units per acre. The applicant is proposing to change that land use to high-density residential, which would allow densities over 10 units per acre. The proposed density for the development is 11.39 units per acre, so it would warrant the land use change. This is the proposed site plan. As you can see, there's 23 townhomes. The first group of townhomes all front on Elmwood Drive. This is a 20-foot-wide product. These homes will be accessed through a rear-entry garage, which is off the private drive. The second group of townhomes are a 24-foot-wide townhome that is a front-entry product, and these will be accessed off that private drive. For this development, the applicant is requesting special setbacks, with the front being 20 feet, a side being 15, and the rear being 20, and a minimum building separations of 50 feet and 30 feet. The applicant is proposing a gated entrance, and then there'll be a 22-foot-wide private street with 50-foot access and utility easement. This is the location of the proposed open space, and then their detention facility. In addition to all of that, the applicant is proposing nine guest parking spaces, six of which will be located on Elmwood Drive in parallel parking along Elmwood, and then there'll be three additional spots within the development. With this request, there are five variances, the first being a front setback reduction from 50 feet down to 15, a side setback reduction from 35 down to 10, a rear setback reduction from 40 to 20, and a building height increase from 35 to 40, and an impervious surface area increase from 35 to 65%. These are the illustrations of the proposed homes, and this would be the view from Elmwood Here's the proposed building elevations. These are the 20-foot-wide product that'll be fronting on Elmwood Drive with the rear-entry garages. The view at the bottom is what you would see from Elmwood, and the elevations at the top are what you'd see from the private drive. These are the 24-foot-wide product that fronts on the private street. This is the subject site today, and then these are adjacent properties to give you some context of what's going on in the area. Community Development recommends approval of the rezoning from OI to RM12 Conditional for 23 single-family homes at a density of 11.39 units per acre, with following conditions. Standard conditions from Section 1201 apply, except for Number 2, 8, 16, and 17. The rest of the conditions deal with the composition of the homes, the requirement for protective covenants, open space requirements, storm water management requirements, traffic improvements, underground utilities, street and entrance design, and tree ordinance requirements. In addition to the standard conditions, staff is requesting 12 special conditions. Number 14 deals with the setbacks, I've already read those to you. 15 deals with the building separation requirements. 16 limits the number of units per building to 6. 17 deals with the minimum floor area, which limits, or which requires a minimum floor area of 1,800 square feet. 18 requires a minimum driveway length of 22 feet. 19 requires a fire sprinkler system in each unit. 20 requires that the rear of the townhomes have some kind of architectural feature that delineates between the individual units. 21 is the requirement of a 5-foot sidewalk, 2-foot grass buffer along Elmwood Drive, and a 4-foot sidewalk within the development. 22 is the requirement for a 10-foot landscape buffer along the northern and southern property lines. Those are the property lines that back up to Jockle Sporting Goods and the apartment to the south. 23 is the developer's responsible for any water and sanitary sewer improvements deemed necessary by the Public Works Director. 24, the developer's responsible for any fire access improvements deemed necessary by the Fire Marshal. 25 is the requirement for the 50-foot access easement and utility easement. 26 is a right-of-way dedication along Elmwood to get the parallel parking in the sidewalk all within the public right-of-way. 27 is the requirement for the storm water management facility to be located on HOA property. 28 is a requirement for street trees along Elmwood at a distance of 40 feet between trees. 29, this requires the preservation of trees during the land disturbance activity, and if they can't be preserved, then they got to be removed during that time period. 30 ties the approval of the rezoning to the site plan submitted. 31 ties the approval of the zoning to the elevation submitted, and then 32 deals with additional stipulations added by Mr. Sam's. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Rusty, now this is going to be an HOA in property?
Yes, there is private infrastructure between the streets and the detention facility, so it'll require an HOA to maintain that infrastructure.
Okay, and originally, I thought we were told that there would be some parking at each of the two front buildings for guests and stuff, but this looked like it showed that there's only going to be one guest parking area for like six cars, is that right?
There's six parking spaces on Elmwood Drive. Three are north of the entrance, and three are south of the entrance, and then there's three parking spaces within the development. One right at the entrance into the development, where it dead-ends into this parking space, and that'll be where the mail kiosk is located. And then two more parking spaces located on the north end of the private drive up along Jockle Sporting.
Is this already been approved by the Fire Marshal and everything, or can they get a truck in there? Because it looks like it's going to be a little bit tight.
The Fire Marshal's reviewed the plans, and he feels comfortable that they can serve this development.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Any other questions, Mr. Morton? The applicant, Mr. Sam?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. For the record, my name's Garvis Samms of the law firm of Samms, Lark, and Huff in Valley, and Marietta. And tonight, it's my pleasure to represent David Woodbury. We've been before you on a number of occasions, specifically with respect to a niche of development that he's found along the Spring Road corridor that's fueled by the finalization and the recommendations of your LCI study that was adopted last April of 2017. Also have, and this is Mr. Woodbury, seated on the front row here, I found out when you sit here on the front row, you really can't see this side at all, so I'm not going to, but he's right there. And I also have Mr. Jeff Kingsell, who is president of Providence, with us, who is going to be the partners in the development of this. This was heard and unanimously recommended for approval by the Planning Commission. There was no opposition then, there's no opposition tonight. We have the support of the adjacent townhome development, which I believe is called Spring Heights, is my understanding. They haven't petitioned the community or appeared here, but you know, if you can diffuse They haven't petitioned the community or appeared here, but you know, if you, if you can diffuse, that is, address and respond to questions that are articulated by the public, it's so much better to, to have them here. And if they were in opposition, trust me, they, they would be here. Rusty's done a good job of orienting you with respect to the positioning of the property in, in the context of development. I would like to do, set the stage and answer some Blue Steen's questions, of course, and other questions that the mayor and city council may have. This is a two-point-zero-two-acre tract of land, small, located, as you can see, on the eastern side of Elmwood. It's zoned O and I, there's office buildings on it, for the most part, become functionally obsolete in, in terms of current Class A office space, there's four buildings there. This is denominated as an area of redevelopment on the, the LCI study, which, which you approved and adopted last year. This is actually a downzoning from O and I to RM twelve for the purposes of the... These are upscale townhomes. These are gonna be from three-hundred-and-eighty thousand to four-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars, depending on the kind of upgrades, and it could go higher on that, depending upon the submarket indicators and the preferences of the, of the buyers. But trust me, you, you've got the demographic that Mr. Woodbury and Mr. Kingsfield are... I wanted to say attacking, but targeting in connection with this. Your staff has recommended approval. We did have an opportunity to meet and continue to interface with Councilmember Blue Steen, and we responded to inquiries from the area business owners. And it's interesting, the area business owners are very much involved in, in wanting to know what's going on, because they're looking for the mass that creates, the clientele and the customers that they have as a, as a base. And on balance, I think we've been able to answer their questions and assure them of, of the, of the product. As a result of those discussions, we put together stipulation letters dated March the twenty-eighth. We, we haven't needed to revise that between the Planning and Zoning Board hearing and, and today. But as you, as Rusty showed to you, there, there's three or two other letters, and one of which references the site plan. And I, I may be mistaken, Rusty, but the latest site plan is dated April the twenty-third, 2018. And what it does, it, it tweaks the, the site plan to get to where your consultants, your city engineer, your Public Works Director, and others addresses additionally some parking, as Ms. Blue Steen was talking about, and Rusty is correct on the, the parking numbers. But it, but it also looks at the right-of-way on Elmwood. We thought there wasn't sufficient right-of-way, but there's, there's twenty, there's twenty-six feet of right-of-way there. But still, because of the offset of the road, we originally agreed to voluntarily donate and convey five feet. As it turns out, to get the parking, the parallel parking that we need at that point, the city's gonna need ten feet per right-of-way to have the sidewalk and everything else. So we're voluntarily donating and conveying right-of-way. The stipulations we've agreed to will, will be stipulations in perpetuity. They run with the land, Mr. Woodbury, no one can, can change them, no HOA. Anything that, that changed would have to come back before, before you as the, as the mayor and city, city council. The stipulations, I'll, I'll hit some of the more salient, the higher, the higher points, since there is no opposition, not, not to not to not concentrate on any, because they're all, they're all very important in, in terms of the building blocks we've used to set this up so that you feel comfortable with it. I've, I've given you a handout. Of course, you've seen the architectural style and composition. It's a little more modern than, than maybe what you're used to seeing with the, the flat roofs. And, and, but it's, it's the, it's, it seems to be the, the trend for development, particularly along areas that, that are, or within sub-areas that have contiguity to, to commercially-zoned and utilized properties. And it seems to be very attractive for the demographic that Mr. Kingsfield and Mr. Woodbury are targeting. Total of twenty-three townhomes, it is a density of eleven point three nine. The other two, other two townhome developments that, that you, as a city council, have approved for Mr. Woodbury was thirteen units per acre in 2016, and then twelve point five-two units per acre in 2017. So it's not really divergent from what you're looking for in terms of creating mass along the Spring Road corridor and areas of, denominated as, as areas of redevelopment. These units will range in size from one thousand nine hundred and fifty square feet to two thousand five hundred and fifty square feet, possibly greater. Again, price points... Some of jurisdictions are reluctant to speak about price points. And of course, that's never a condition or stipulation of the zoning, but I think it's important that you understand that, that he builds what he says he's going to build, as is Mr. Kingsfield, and the price points are what they are from three-eighty to four-thirty. The architectural style and composition will be consistent with what I've handed out to you and what Rusty and Ken have, have shown to you. Interestingly enough, the patios, decks, and privacy fencing are gonna be prohibited along and oriented to Elmwood, except for the, the corner units. If you look at how it, how it kinda, it wraps, it'll wrap the front and corner units that face Elmwood. With the exception that the, when you look at the architectural rendering, you're gonna see a lineal park in, in front of it. We, we do not have a lineal park. And so that's not to be disingenuous to you, it just simply was the best architectural rendering and elevation to depict the product. And so that lineal park is not here. If we had more than two-point-zero-two acres, we, we would have the lineal park. The, as shown on the site plan, there are eleven twenty-four-wide townhomes. There are twelve twenty-foot-wide townhomes, and it consists of a mixture, as Rusty said, of front and, and rear-loaded townhomes, two-car garages, at least two additional spaces in the driveways that have sufficient length and width to be able to accommodate. So that's four there, and with the requisite guest parking. It's not gonna be hampered by a lot of developments that don't have sufficient guest parking. These will be for sale only, these are not rental units. We have included pretty much what is now boilerplate provision, that ten percent of these, which is two towns, could be rented at any, at any one, at any one time, for a lease term of not less than, than one year. And you have that for a very good reason. Many jurisdictions are upside down in terms of rental, as opposed to, to fee simple owner-occupied scenarios. And you've gotten away from that very successfully. So, as Blue Steen answered your question, there'll be a master mandatory homeowners association that will govern this, will be submitting declaration of covenants, conditions, and restrictions, which will have very strict architectural controls to ensure that everything that you see that's built is according to what we've presented. The HOA will be responsible for the upkeep and maintenance of all landscaping, all common elements within, including amenities, mail kiosks, landscape buffers, and, and the like. Also, the HOA will be responsible for the gated component of this. And, and we are willing to do that, we want to do that, have it gated. Kinda like the, not the exclusivity of it, to the exclusion of other folks. It just seems to provide a sense of place and a sense of home that sometimes multifamily can't, and neither can townhomes convey. But keep in mind that that has to be approved by your Public Works Director and your city engineer. There are no indications, except good ones, that we'll be able to, to do that.
Okay, so it will be gated?
Yes, ma'am.
As far as we know?
Yes, ma'am.
Now, the picture they showed me earlier, they told me it was gonna be more of a glass look to it. This looks more like a, I don't know what. Not exactly brick, I'm not sure what it is.
No, it's a, it's a combination of brick, stack stone, hardy shake, hardy plank. And of course, there's, there's a glass component to it, but...
Well, it seemed to be more... You know, some of them look like they're all the same, you know, that they're, you could've, anybody could've, I could've drawn it. But that was what I liked about these, is because they had a different look to them. And you told me, they told me that this was gonna be in about the four-hundred-thousand range?
Three-eighty to four-thirty, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, okay.
But these are, these are varying, they have varying components on it in terms of architecturally. And of course, you have one of the strictest ordinances in the metropolitan Atlanta area in terms of not being able to do a hundred percent siding and things like that. So it'll be four-sided architecture.
Now, do they have any that are built in the Cobb area?
I'll ask Mr. Woodbury. This is, this is David Woodbury. Can we swear, ma'am?
Right, here comes somebody else.
This is Mr. Kingsfield, Jeff Kingsfield. Mr. Woodbury, and they have a board.
Maybe we need to go foreign in. Oh, you did?
I did.
Pretty quick?
I can do that.
So, we also built a High Point at Vinings, which is just around the corner. So that's a single-family, also a gated community. We have about ninety-four homes that we've built there. This will be our first townhome that we built in this area.
I think I'm really looking forward to the project. I was just a little bit, you know, when I first met you and all, I was taken aback with twenty-three little townhomes in that, in that area, and I was like, oh, Lord. But I think it's gonna be a great boost to that area, I really do, you know, so...
Just a few more items, just to perfect the, the record on this. I know you have a, a lot on your agenda tonight. The, the open space that's required here is forty-six hundred square feet. The, the plan that is applicable here shows thirteen thousand square feet. It's probably going to be fifteen thousand square feet. That all kind of washes out during plan review, but, but it's, it'll be triple, at least triple, certainly double, at least triple of the open space that's allowed. Your staff recommend approval. Planning Commission without a blip recommended approval unanimously. I've got a lot of other stipulations here, but you've got a lot on your agenda. So let me just say that we do respectfully request that you follow your planning commissions and your staff's recommendations for approval, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Blue Steen.
Any other questions, Mr. Sams?
I don't have a question, but I want to compliment the team on bringing nine and a half million dollars of potential investment property and deliverables to the city and the quality of work that we've seen this company present, and of course, the quality of work from your council. But thank you for showing further interest in Smyrna, because this is your first project or your second project. It's a beautiful thing to see returnees coming back to help us flesh out the rest of the future of Smyrna. Thank you.
I, I have a question. In looking at the map, I, I don't see the two parking places on this map, but you said they were at the end behind, well, I wrote, I guess Rusty said that. Anyway, I don't see them on this map that...
The plot that you had, the, the latest plot is dated April the twenty-third, so I'm, I'm not sure what, what you're looking at.
Okay, so there are that in, okay. And then the questions I have deal with, is there gonna be a buffer on that sidewalk on the private street, the four-foot sidewalk? And then also, where will the homeowners put their, you know, do their sanitation? And how will that be handled within the development?
I don't know.
Okay. I'm just looking, I didn't see that on there.
That generally, and I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just, sometimes I'm at a disadvantage. I, I don't know the answer to that question. But the, the garbage pickup and disposal, it'll be screened from view either with three-sided enclosures and a gate on it. So it'll be totally hidden from view in terms of any, any dumpsters. Now, are you talking about individual trash cans?
I didn't know how it was gonna be handled, if it was gonna be a dumpster or individual trash cans. Okay, you wanna, okay, thank you.
So we, we have individual trash cans, and we actually make it part of our covenant. So they're required to be in the garage, other than the trash pickup day. So on trash pickup day, they'll be out at the end of the driveway. At the end of the trash pickup day, then they have to be back into the garage.
Thank you. And then the, is there gonna be a buffer on the interior at the sidewalk? Or will it be right up next to the...
The plan reflects the sidewalk, the four-foot sidewalk interior to the private street to be up against the, the back of street. So there will not be a buffer in between the street and the... But the only people accessing these homes or the street will be people that are living in the community. So you're not having pass-through traffic that they're, you know...
I was just wondering about that.
But they'll, but they will have direct connection from the four-foot sidewalk to the five-foot sidewalk that's outside along Elmwood.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other questions?
Unless I missed you saying something, these are three-story townhomes, correct? Are they two-story, three? It looks three, but it's...
They are three-story townhomes.
I'm sorry?
They are three-story townhomes.
Okay, let me make sure. Do you have a, a picture of the ones that are the front, the, the garage in the front?
These are the garage front, the ones that we call the Fletcher. So that's the front, where you can see we put a porch over the garage. It helps mask some of that garage frontage. And there's the rear of those homes. And then these are the fronts of the homes that are on Elmwood and the rear of those homes.
And you can see how the, the patios and any things like that are just for the, the end units of those and kind of wrap them on Elmwood.
Any other questions? Ms. Blue Steen?
Mr. Sams, are you ready for me to go and approve it? Go vote for approval?
Yes, ma'am.
You need to.
Take victory and move.
You need to go now.
I'm gonna sit down now.
I didn't know if you had anything else you wanted to tell us or...
You're oh-for-one already, so I...
Thank you.
Get you back to even.
Okay, well, if no one else has any questions or anything regarding twenty-eighteen dash one sixty-two, I would like to move for approval of the zoning request, Z eighteen dash zero zero six, rezoning from OI to RM twelve conditional for twenty-three townhomes at a density of eleven point thirty-nine units per acre, two-point-two, two-point-oh-two acres, landlot six-six-six dash two-eight-eight-one and two-eight-eight-five Elmwood Drive, the Woodbury Group LLC.
And motion is second to approve this zoning request. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Let's approve six-zero. Thank you very much, thank y'all. Betting five-hundred for tonight, Garvis, not bad. Out of me, twenty-eighteen dash sixty-six, it's a public hearing only. Zoning request, Z eighteen dash zero zero three, rezoner from R twenty to RAD conditional for the development of thirty-three single-family homes at a density of two-point-nine-two units per acre, eleven-point-three-two acres, landlot three-forty, three-forty-one, and three-eighty, thirty-three-oh-five, and thirty-three-eleven, Old Concord Road, CS Realty Group. Miss the applicant here, Kevin Moore. Ms. Jones, will you please give us the background, please?
CS Realty Group LLC is requesting an annexation and rezoning from R twenty Cobb County to RAD Conditional Smyrna for the development of thirty-three new single-family homes at a density of two-point-nine-two units per acre. The proposed subdivision will be accessed from Old Concord Road via a new public street. The zoning request was heard by the Planning and Zoning Board at the April ninth, twenty-eighteen meeting, and it was recommended for approval by a vote of six to zero. Community Development recommends approval of the rezoning from R twenty to RAD Conditional with conditions. And Rusty Martin is supposed to be presenting this one as well.
This is similar to the one we had earlier, where we'll have a public hearing first on the zoning request, then second, we will annex the property, and third, we'll have the final vote on the, on the same rezoning. So I would ask, I know the applicants here, is there anyone here? This is a public hearing, is there anyone here who's in opposition to, or that would like to make any public comment concerning this zoning request? All right, let the record show there is none. This is in Ms. Blackburn's district. I'm sure she's gonna want Mr. Martin to make a presentation, and we'll go from there.
All right. Yes, this property is a piece of property that's located in unincorporated Cobb County. The applicant is requesting to annex property into the city of Smyrna to build thirty-three new single-family homes. Just to give you all a little history, the, a couple of months ago, you all approved a, a development that was at the corner of Old Concord Road and, and Concord Road, that, that northwest corner. This property is pretty much catty-corner across Con, Old Concord Road and is immediately behind the Kroger and, and behind Lamar Circle back there. This property has a zoning designation of R twenty in the county. The applicant is requesting to change that zoning to RAD Conditional. And if you, if you look at this map, you can see to the east, that's the, that's the red property, that's the Kroger property, and it's got a general commercial zoning. And then to the south... And then to the south, there's some general commercial, and then there's Concord Lake Village, which has an R A D zoning. And then to the north is Huntington Trace, and that has a residential townhome zoning classification. And then all the property in Cobb County has a R twenty zoning designation. In the county, this property has a medium-density residential land use, future land use designation. They're proposing to stay within that land use designation for the city, since they're under six units per acre, there's no need for a change. Here's the proposed site plan. As you can see, you'll enter the property off Old Concord Road. You'll enter to the site, and there'll be one cul-de-sac to the south, and then it'll dead-end to a cul-de-sac on the main road. There are a couple site constraints with this property that sort of made the design what it is on this map, and I'll show you that here in a minute. Here's the location of the proposed detention facility. Here are the stream buffers that run through the site, one on the northeast corner, and then one that runs basically through the middle of the property that bisects the property into two developed tracks. In addition, there are some areas that they are proposing to encroach into the impervious setback area of the stream buffers. And with those encroachments, they're proposing to offset those encroachments by preserving additional area along the stream buffers, and that's where these areas are shown. They're proposing around a thousand to two thousand square feet of encroachment into those impervious setback areas, and this mitigation plan is showing anywhere between four and six thousand square feet of additional buffer area being saved. With this development, proposing a five-foot sidewalk, two-foot grass buffer within the development, and then a new deceleration lane and a five-foot sidewalk along Old Concord Road. One of the staff stipulations is to connect this sidewalk to the sidewalk that ends at Old Concord Lake Village. With this request, the applicant is requesting the following setbacks: a front setback of twenty feet, an exterior side of twenty, an interior side setback of five, and a rear setback of fifteen. On lots fourteen and thirteen, those are the lots that have some impervious surface area setbacks from the stream. Those are the requests of five-foot rear setback. In addition, there are six variances associated with the rezoning request. The first, reducing the lot size from fifteen thousand down to approximately five thousand square feet. The second one, reducing the lot width from a hundred feet down to fifty. The second, reducing the front setback from thirty-five feet to twenty. And the next one, reducing the interior side from ten feet to five, and the rear setback from thirty to fifteen and five. And finally, the last variance deals with the encroachment into the seventy-five-foot impervious surface area setback. As you can see, staff is supportive of all the variances due to the stream buffers and the site constraints, as well as the setback variances are similar to the variances that have been approved for Concord Lake Village and other infill developments within the Here are the proposed home elevations. Picture of the property from Old Concord Road. And then adjacent properties. Community Development recommends approval of the rezoning from R twenty to R A D conditional for the thirty-three single-family homes at a density of two point nine two units per acre with conditions. Staff is recommending standard conditions from section twelve oh one, excluding number two, eight, nine, ten, seventeen, but leaving in the conditions that deal with the composition of the homes, the requirement for protective covenances, the requirement for open space requirements, a stipulation that deals with stormwater management, underground utilities, traffic improvements, a requirement for a deceleration lane, and then street requirements and landscaping requirements. In addition to the standard conditions, staff is requesting or is proposing additional special conditions. Number sixteen deals with the setbacks stated in previous slides. Seventeen establishes a minimum lot size of four thousand nine hundred and fifty-five square feet. Eighteen establishes a minimum lot width of fifty feet. Nineteen establishes a minimum floor area of eighteen hundred square feet. And that is, the standard R A D requirement is eighteen hundred square feet. These homes will probably be built much larger than that. Twenty establishes the minimum lot coverage at forty-five percent. Twenty-one requires a minimum driveway length of twenty-two feet. Twenty-two requires the water and sewer improvements deemed necessary by Public Works. Twenty-three is the requirement for the sidewalk and grass buffer. Twenty-four is the requirement for new curb and gutter along Old Concord Road. Twenty-five requires a right-of-way dedication along Old Concord to get the deceleration lane and the sidewalk within the public right-of-way. Twenty-six is the requirement for a thirty-foot drainage and access and maintenance easement along the dam that adjoins the property to the south. Twenty-seven deals with preservation of trees during the land disturbance process. Twenty-eight requires the stormwater management facility to be located on HOA property. Twenty-nine is the requirement that any encroachment into the seventy-five-foot impervious surface area be mitigated with a one-per-one match. And thirty ties the zoning to the site plan submitted, and thirty-one ties them to the home elevations. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Wilkinson?
Thank you. I'm just a little confused. When I was reading this, did you say it doesn't require a land use change to the future? Because I was looking at some of the documents here, and I thought it was going from medium to higher.
The county's future land use designation is medium-density residential, so when we'd annex it, we'd have to match that designation, which is medium-density residential in the city as well. But our density requirement is up to six units per acre for medium-density residential. So since this is two point nine units per acre, you're below the six units, so there's no change requirement.
Okay, so that's what I want to ask about, because in here, it actually says that it would be a moderate-density residential within the city.
There.
Pardon me?
That's an error.
Oh, okay. And, because I thought that was less than, let's see, moderate density is less than four point five, though, isn't it?
It is, but...
Why wouldn't it be then?
Because the thirty-year plan calls for six units per acre, there's no need to change it to reduce it down. You just leave it the same, and if it redevelops later, then they could go up to six units per acre, but that's not contemplated in this plan.
And this rezoning is tied to the, to that site plan as well?
To the site plan, yes.
Any other questions, Mr. Moore?
Rusty, I know we talked about the sidewalks, there's gonna be a five-foot sidewalk, the possibility, and we've discussed about having that increased to seven feet, so that matches what we've done across the way, the catty corner on that property.
Yeah, that was for that property. I don't know that we had that discussion with this property. Okay. Okay, I apologize.
Okay. All right, that's it.
I guess the applicant will deal with that when he comes up here.
Yes, okay.
Okay. We'll hear from the applicant, Mr. Moore.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Kevin Moore here on behalf of the applicant and owners in this rezoning and annexation request for this eleven point three acres for rezoning from R twenty in Cobb County to R A D in the city of Smyrna. As you can see, and I think Mr. Martin did an excellent job of going around the surrounding area where this is on Old Concord, and really kind of where the property finds itself, especially from a land use planning perspective. To the east is the back of the Kroger Shopping Center that it adjoins on one side of the property, kind of coming on around it, and then it adjoins a nice townhome development on one side. Coming down towards the south is the villages, which is a newer development, infill development just off of Old Concord. That is a development that's at four point three units per acre. There's also the new development that was approved at the intersection, really right at the intersection of Concord and Old Concord, for another infill type of residential development. And then you have an area in Cobb County, which is R twenty, and is an older developed, nice developed neighborhood off of Old Concord. So what this property ends up finding itself in is kind of that transition. Can it provide the bridge of transition from a land use planning perspective, especially there's a nice-sized church also on its north side that's there as well? So it finds itself in that kind of position, and how could it be developed and influenced by those other areas? And what we've done, and what C S Realty and the applicant have done in this instance, is utilize those and work with staff to what we think is really provide that transition or bridge, if you will, from the intensity of the Kroger that's on one side to the much lower intensity of the neighborhood on the other. And by doing that, what we're proposing is a detached, single-family neighborhood, really projected sales points that'll be in the five hundreds is what is projected for this. And we think that when you look at those elevations that are provided as part of this, that that's what these will be. These will be excellent, nice homes, and provide that excellent land use transition or bridge from intensity, from other higher-density residential uses to the lower residential intensity uses of a single-family neighborhood. And you can tell that just by looking at some of the information that staff has provided and to the question of the future land use plan. In Cobb County, the future land use plan shows this property as being within what they call medium-density residential. In Cobb County, that encourages development from between two point five units per acre to five units per acre. That's what that particular land use category in Cobb County encourages or looks to. What we're proposing is two point nine, so on the very lower end of that density range. And in fact, in the area for the city of Smyrna, for the residential properties that are in this area, it's medium-density residential as well is what is the future land use category, which as Mr. Martin stated, is up to six. And that's why you'll see some of these other residential densities ranging from three and a half up to just over six in terms of that surrounding area residential density. So again, what we're proposing is something much more on the lower end of that. And one of the comments that I've discussed with staff and others as we've worked through this application over a good, long period of time in trying to put this together with some of the challenges that you can see from a site development standpoint, is that what we were attempting to do here and working with staff, and I think what staff had a great influence on, as well as others that commented with it, is to lower the density bar and not simply use those existing densities to then go up another step. And I think that we've done an excellent job with that, and this applicant has done an excellent job with that from a density standpoint by being on that lower end. In addition, what you can see by this site design and layout is the dedication and preservation of those stream buffer areas. There's two stream buffer areas that impact the site, one in the middle and one in the back. Those are being completely preserved. There is a slight encroachment into two small areas, but that's only the encroachment of the seventy-five-foot impervious setback, not the actual stream buffer, which will remain undisturbed. And those are being mitigated by then having other areas that are along that same channel, so that you really end up having a location in the middle of this proposed development that makes for a beautiful green park, because that means that area remains undisturbed and protected in perpetuity. It's not the back of somebody's lot or the back of somebody's home or residence that can be disturbed, but rather is owned, controlled, and the future of it's maintained and preserved by the homeowners association in both instances, so that you do get a sense of place and a sense, when you drive in there, you'll still have those beautiful areas that'll be preserved for all time as far as this particular development goes. Lastly, just to kind of sum up some of the points that Mr. Martin raised when he went through his staff conditions, this applicant, we worked with staff very diligently in responding to all of their questions, to all of the issues that they went over with us on multiple occasions, and we are in agreement with all of staff's proposed conditions and recommendations. That's a part of the process. That included, this proposal initially was submitted with a total of forty-one homes, forty-two homes, I'm sorry, which has now been reduced by nearly twenty-five percent, by nearly a fourth to thirty-three. And that's a direct result of input we've received from stakeholders, from staff, as we've worked through the issues, primarily so that we could make this proposal, so we could make the variance requests, the setbacks, the lot sizes, the types of homes consistent with the same types of variances setbacks that have been granted for prior developments that are going on in this area that are likewise infill. But again, us taking that bar down just a notch from the terms of density. But with that, staff has recommended approval. Your planning commission unanimously recommended approval as well. We think we've presented an excellent development plan with excellent homes to be built, and we look forward, hopefully, to annexing this property and development in the city of Smyrna. With that, we would respectfully request your approval of the annexation and rezoning tonight. Thank you.
Any questions, Mr. Moore?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have one. I may have not heard it, you may have articulated what the expected price point per unit?
Sure. These are expected to be in the five hundreds.
Five hundreds?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
We're also, I'm going back to the sidewalk.
Yes, yes.
Situation, I know it's a five-foot sidewalk, and when we had discussed it, you'd said that you would be willing to talk to the developer to be seven-foot sidewalk.
That's correct.
And we also see that it's going to be connected with Concord.
Right. Couple of things to that, and I'm glad you asked. After that issue was raised, and you had raised that issue for us to take a look at that, the new development that has been approved, catty corner that Mr. Martin discussed, they had agreed to do a seven-foot sidewalk, which is a little bit wider, gives you more room for both pedestrians and bikers and so forth, especially on Old Concord in this location. It kind of widens, it's kind of a hill, provides just for a wider, safer path. And we've looked at that and are in agreement to do that and do an expanded sidewalk here. Also, as opposed to simply, normally you just build the sidewalk across your road frontage. In this case, there's a parcel between us that's not included before you have the villages. They have a sidewalk that comes down, so if we built our sidewalk just on the frontage, you'd have a gap. But within that area, it is within city right-of-way, and we've agreed to construct that sidewalk so it connects, and you don't have the gap.
So is it gonna connect with a seven-foot existing sidewalk?
The sidewalk from the villages is five feet wide, but it'll connect to where that is, and I guess it'll taper down, or it'll make it make sense from a development standpoint. But that way, it's consistent with the sidewalk that's gonna be installed across the street, essentially. And we'll work with community development to make that happen.
I'm gonna say this, I don't get it. If there's an existing five-foot sidewalk there now, why wouldn't we just continue the...
We could, but we've been requested to incorporate what I think is a sidewalk vision along this area, where we've heard some concerns about making them wider, and we're happy to accommodate that. The development going in across the street is doing it, and so we're not being singled out, and we're okay to do it.
So is there sidewalks below this property?
Below this property, you have the church, and then you reach Church Road, actually, the intersection of Church Road, where you'll have a sidewalk that picks up at that point.
Yeah.
Then connects to Concord. Go ahead.
Yeah, there's a five-foot sidewalk from Old Concord up pat to the north side of Concord Lake Village. And then there's a piece of property that's in unincorporated Cobb County between Concord Lake Village and this property. So there would be a gap in between there, but there is a sidewalk from Concord Road to probably four hundred, five hundred feet up Old Concord Road.
Is there a sidewalk from this property down to Church Road on that side?
No, not on the north side, not going that way, not going north.
There is a little bit of a sidewalk there.
There is a little bit of a sidewalk there that's close to that traffic light that's church and Old Concord.
Yeah.
Just a small portion there, but.
From church down to this property, no, there's not a sidewalk.
I'm, I'm just saying that if you establish a seven-foot sidewalk and try to construct seven-foot sidewalks all the way, that could be fairly expensive and almost cost-prohibited. But, and a lot of that's not in the city anyways, and incorporated Cobb, so okay. Whatever y'all have agreed to is.
Understandable.
Fine, I just, sometimes I don't get it.
Can I, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna not get it either, but I got a question. You're saying you're going to extend the sidewalk south across that other property? Is that correct?
That's correct. It will, it will be, it will have to be within the right-of-way. So whatever that can accommodate from a community development standpoint.
Will that tie into a sidewalk?
Yes. That's, that's the point of going.
The subdivision there on the corner.
That's correct.
Has a sidewalk already, so it will be a sidewalk throughout the, throughout this new development, and then across the property that remains in the county, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct. And it connects to an existing sidewalk that then goes all the way to Concord.
Okay.
South.
I'm not as hung up on the seven-foot sidewalk inside the development, but I appreciate you making the gesture outside of the development to tie in that sidewalk.
It would only be on the frontage, not inside.
Right.
Just to be clear that we're trying to accommodate the request.
But you're only gonna put the sidewalk where there's right-of-way, right?
That's right. We can't take somebody else's property.
So you don't know how wide that sidewalk will be then, do you?
Well, that'll be the part where we're gonna have to work with community development to accommodate that, work that out. Again, what we're trying to do is accommodate a request. That's where we've come from. Yes.
I appreciate you doing that, and I know our staff is trying to maximize the future potential for the corridor, and, and they are right to have a hope that that will happen one day where every part of that.
Sure.
Unincorporated and incorporated will connect the dots. But I've had enough frustration from citizens telling me we have sidewalks going to end and don't connect anything. And I, I don't want to propagate this continued problem that we have. And so I've proposed a sidewalk bank. Think about those of you who are actually before governments like this, so that we can actually bank the money, and when it does become apparent that we can connect all the dots, that we do so. But the developers are paying into that for their commitment, for their peace when the right time comes. I don't want somebody to walk out of this development, walk twenty yards, and then go, well, where am I going from here? Because the whole point is walkability, connectivity, and that sort of thing. And if you had an ADA compliant component moment right there, that would shoot it all to pieces. So I don't want to fall into that. But that's not a part of our discussion today. You don't have to opine, but I'm just letting you know that's a discussion that we've had internally, and I thank you for trying to accommodate the requests of the staff to get where they are. With this and the unit across, we have that unincorporated section. I don't know anything about that property or property owner, so I'm, I'm eager to see personally annexation of some of those pieces so that we don't have to have those discussions. But I'll just share that with you for the benefit of whoever might be listening.
Okay. Any other questions? That seller's really proud of his property, so that's part of the issue for that piece.
I have, I don't know if it would be Mr. Moore or if it would be Rusty and Ken, but I do want to just thank you for working on this project. And, you know, I know at one time the number of homes was a lot, the density was higher at like forty-three, and now it's thirty-three. And I do appreciate y'all working on that, and, and I'm happy that it's below that three point, because I, I know that a lot of the neighborhoods surrounding there are zoned R twenty, and I think that that's helpful. So my question is, because I did read this in the, in the document here, and I was thinking that it would, I know it was in the county before at, at, you know, the, the density was between, I think, what'd you say, two to five or something, two and a half to five? But within the city, what I read is it was gonna be moderate-density residential on our map, which I think that it is, it falls within the moderate density, because that's below four and a half. I would like to see it, the future land use reflect that as moderate-density in that area, if that's a possibility. So that's, I don't know if that would be a question for Ken and Rusty, or?
Sure.
Thank you. Thanks.
We can't do that at this time, because we haven't advertised for the change, and we haven't posted the property appropriately to make the change at this moment.
All right. I'm gonna end the public hearing portion of this zoning request, and we'll go to F twenty eighteen dash two thirty-four, approval of ordinance twenty eighteen dash zero two for annexation, one hundred percent owners requesting annexation, all tracts of land lying and being in landlots three forty, three forty-one, and three eighty of the seventeenth District, Second Section, Cobb County, Georgia, a total of eleven point three acres, tract being known as thirty-three oh five and thirty-three eleven, Old Concord Road, Smyrna, Georgia, three double oh eight two. The annexation of this tract of property will be effective June one, twenty eighteen, and become part of Ward Three. This is in Ms. Marilyn Blackburn's district. I think we've already had pretty much the background on this. Ms. Blackburn.
All right. With that, if there are any other questions, and I just want to say thank you, Mr. Moore, for all of your assistance here. I appreciate it. I am going to move for approval of item F two zero one eight dash two three four, approval of ordinance two zero one eight dash zero two for annexation, one hundred percent owners requesting annexation, all tracts of land lying and being in landlots three forty, three forty-one, and three eighty, Seventeenth District, Second Section, Cobb County, Georgia, a total of eleven point three-acre tract being known as thirty-three oh five and thirty-three eleven, Old Concord Road, Smyrna, Georgia, three zero zero eight two. The annexation, annexation of this tract of property will be effective June one, twenty eighteen, and become part of Ward Three.
Second.
Having motion second to approve this annexation request. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved six zero. Item G twenty eighteen dash two forty-two is the final vote, zoning request, Z eighteen dash zero zero three, rezoning from R twenty to RAD conditional for the development of thirty-three single-family homes at the density of two point nine two units per acre, eleven point three two acres, landlot three forty, three forty-one, and three eighty, thirty-three oh five, and thirty-three eleven, Old Concord Road, CS Realty Group LLC. This was in Ms. Blackburn's district, so Ms. Blackburn.
Thank you. Oh, okay. Thank you, Mayor. With that, I would like to also, if there are any other questions regarding this? No? Okay. I would like to move for approval, item G two zero one eight dash two four two, that's the final vote, rezoning request, Z one eight, Z eighteen dash zero zero three, rezoning from R dash twenty to RAD conditional for a development of thirty-three single-family homes at a density of two point nine two units per acre, eleven point three two acres, landlots three forty, three forty-one, three eighty, at thirty-three oh five and thirty-three eleven, Old Concord Road. And I, to include the, the seven-foot sidewalk variances with that. Second.
Motion second to approve this zoning request. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved six zero. Thank you very much. Item number H.
Our prayers for your family, Kevin. Tell your dad.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item H twenty eighteen dash two two seven is a public hearing, V eighteen dash zero forty-one, plat approval with variances for two residential lots, zero point eight one nine acres, landlot five twenty-seven, at thirteen hundred Hayes Drive, J.W. Hall Custom Building. Who's the applicant here? I wonder what y'all were out there for. Ms. Jones, the background, please.
J.W. Hall Custom Building is requesting approval to replat and reconfigure the existing two residential lots at thirteen hundred Hayes Drive to be reconfigured into two new single-family residential lots. The subject property is currently comprised of two lots of record, with one lot fronting on Hayes Drive, and the other lot being landlocked behind the first lot. Planning and zoning board recommended approval by a vote of six to zero on May the fourteenth, twenty eighteen. Community development has reviewed the proposed reconfiguration and replating against the requirements of the R fifteen zoning district. Community development recommends approval of the requested reconfiguration and replating of thirteen hundred Hayes Drive.
The applicant, if you please step forward. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that's in opposition to, or that would like to make any public comment concerning this variance for two residential lots? Let the record show there is no opposition. Does any of you sworn in, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. This is Mr. Ron Fennel. I think this would normally be Ward Six, and we don't have a council person for that, so, Mr. Fennel, please don't be as long-winded as you normally are. We're all tired.
We're all tired, hungry, ready to go home. I am proud to represent the Ward Six residents for this application, and I look forward to hear from the applicant as to the process.
Thank you. Thank you all. My name is Josh Hall. I'm a builder, and this project has already kind of come through here twice already with two different properties that are adjacent to this property, and both are already under development. And this one is pretty much identical to what was approved in February on twelve seventy-two Hayes Drive, which was also two lots, one being landlocked, and we replatted both of those so that two homes could be side by side and fit nicely within the development that is already underway, that is at the corner of Hayes Drive and King Springs Road, which are, there are five homes being built there. So me and my partners, we own those two properties already. The idea with this property is to be a bookend to that development, and we, and the homes that we plan to build will be identical to the homes that are already being built next to it, which all of them are gonna be higher-end homes, at least seven to eight hundred thousand yard homes, five bedrooms, over, over three thousand square feet, large lots, as, you know, these are very, very deep lots, so for new construction will be fairly unusual for Smyrna when it comes to the size of the backyards and the lots and all of that. So our, our goal is to incorporate all these homes that we've already gotten approved and have, have started to develop with these two new ones, so that all of them can be a part of one community, but that will fit nicely into the already existing Hayes Drive homes and the Forest Hills neighborhood.
Okay. So Josh, that will make seven homes in a row there, pretty much?
Eight, actually.
Eight? Okay. All right. Anybody have any questions?
Anybody have any questions? Mr. Fennel?
If you'll step aside, I'll go ahead and move approval.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, he can stand there. He's all right. He's not.
Do it, stay in there if you want. Okay.
Go ahead.
No further questions. Mr. Mayor, I move approval of item number two zero one eight dash two two seven, V eighteen zero forty-one, plat approval for variances of two residential lots, zero point eight one nine acres, lot, landlots, five two seven, thirteen hundred Hayes Drive, J.W. Hall Custom Building.
Motion second to approve this variance. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved six zero.
Thank you for investing in Smyrna. Thank you very much.
Nice homes. Item I, public, twenty eighteen dash two two eight, public hearing, V eighteen dash zero four zero, plat approval with variances for two residential lots at zero point eight one nine acres, landlot four eighty-seven, eleven fourteen Church Street, PM Builders. Ms., the applicant's here, I'm sure, he's been sitting here all night. Ms. Jones, the background, please.
PM Builders is requesting approval to divide an existing lot into two residential lots for two single-family homes at eleven fourteen Church Street. The subject property is currently comprised of one lot of record fronting on Church Street. In nineteen thirteen, the same property was platted as two lots within the Reed and Walker subdivision. The applicant wishes to revert back to the two-lot configuration. Planning and zoning board recommend approval by a vote of six to zero on May the fourteenth, twenty eighteen. Community development has reviewed the proposed configuration and replating against the requirements of the R fifteen zoning district. Community development recommends approval of the requested reconfiguration and replating of eleven fourteen Church Street.
Applicant here, please step forward. This is, this is a public hearing. Is anyone here that's in opposition to, or that would like to make any public comment concerning this variance request? Let the record show there is none. This is in Ms. Blackburn's district. Ms. Blackburn.
Thank you. Well, I think I would like to hear from this gentleman here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Brad Thompson. The request I have before you tonight is very similar to the one I brought before this body about sixty days ago, with the property just to the west of this particular property. The only real difference between this request and the request, the previous request, is this has an existing house on it that is actually a legal duplex, so the only real difference is I'm going to separate, instead of having one house with two people or two families living in it, I'm going to have two houses with families living in it. And so it's pretty straightforward, and I'm going to be brief, recognizing the hour of the night.
Okay.
Any questions?
Mr. Thompson, what is the value of the homes at the end of the day when you finish your project?
They'll be in the four hundreds.
In the four hundreds. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Rusty, is there any other information you wanted to share, or?
No, other than associated with this plat is, is two variances, one for a lot with reduction from eighty-five feet down to forty-nine feet, and a side setback reduction from ten feet to five feet. And staff is supportive of both those variances.
Okay. And also wanting to see, Mr. Thompson, if you'd be willing to include five feet of the right-of-way for a dedication for Church Street project?
I'm always willing to help when it's not too painful, and this doesn't hurt, so I can do that.
Great. Okay. Any other questions? All right. With that, Mayor, I would like to move for approval of item I, two zero one eight dash two two eight, V one eighteen dash zero four zero, plat approval with variances for two residential lots, zero point eight one nine acres, landlot four eight seven, one, one, one for Church Street, PM Builders, to include the right-of-way dedication for Church Street project.
Motion second to approve this variance for these two residential lots. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved six zero. Thank you very much. Item five is previous licenses. We have none. Item six is formal business, A, twenty eighteen dash two four zero, public hearing, first public hearing for the FY twenty nineteen proposed budget. Ms. Jones, the background, please.
Per the adoption of the proposed fiscal year twenty nineteen annual budget, there will be public hearings. Tonight is the first public hearing. Kristen Robinson, our finance director, and Jared Sigmund, our budget officer, are here to give the presentation on the proposed budget. The total proposed budget is ninety-two million, fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine thousand. There will be another public hearing on Wednesday, May twenty-third, from one P M, pardon me, from twelve P M. to one P M. here in the council chambers. The budget is scheduled for adoption on Monday, June the eighteenth.
Mr. Mayor, the finance committee recommends that the staff present their findings to the assembly of the budget, so I would like to call on our finance director and budget officer. Officer to present so that we may ask whatever questions.
We don't have a technical difficulty.
Well, the technical difficulty. Posted on our city's website is that schedule that was just read out. Want to direct your attentions there because you can then access the documents that are publicly available on the website. If you have any additional questions, contact information is there for all members of council and the staff who can attempt to answer all the questions that you might find appropriate to ask. This is a process. It's gone through a series of department head winnowings and it comes back to the administration for final packaging to get to the point where we've had to make some priority choices along the way. This is the best outcome of all of those hours and hours of work that the team has put in to maintain our, our budget integrity. We have a great open process and at the end of the day, we're proud to have a triple-A bond rating consistently for a number of years now. Not many cities reside in a county inside of a state with a triple-A bond rating, so I think Smyrna taxpayers can look with pride to how we are entrusted and manage the resources provided to us and we appreciate that trust and we try to maintain our degree of response appropriately and accordingly.
I just was curious, Mr. Fennel, were you anticipating technical difficulty? Because it seems like you've been practicing that for a long time.
We thank him for that.
No, he would keep going until they get this thing fixed.
I'm going to keep on improving.
Either that or I want to change to some elevator music or something.
I will start the collection plate at the back of the room.
It ain't going to be ten more minutes listening to Mr. Fennel. Yeah.
Apparently, we didn't put enough money in the technical budget for the year so far, so we'll get to that.
We thought that our, the flash drive had, was cleared so it would work. We checked that, but.
Corky has a sermon prepared if you'd give him half a chance.
We're almost there. You didn't say sermon. Give so much. We apologize for the delay.
All right, we'll get started. Ms. Robinson and I will be tag-teaming this tonight, but I'll get us started with a comparison of the FY nineteen proposed budget to the revised budget for the current year. And you see that slide on the screen now. This is just an overview slide. We'll go through this quickly and get into a little bit more detail as we get further into the presentation. But you can see the general fund is projected to increase about three-point-four million dollars or seven-point-one percent. Special revenue funds, including the E-911 Fund and the Hotel Motel Fund, as well as some other various funds, are projected to decrease about a hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand dollars or three-point-eight percent. Capital project funds are projected to be down quite a bit, eight-point-two million dollars or thirty-eight percent. I can tell you that is due to the timing of the 2016 SPOST projects. Over the past two years, we have issued a bond and used those bond proceeds to acquire properties along Windy Hill Road for the improvement project of that corridor. And that's pretty much wrapped up at this point, which is why you see the decrease in that for FY nineteen. We do have one internal service fund and that is our vehicle replacement fund. It's projected to be up six-hundred-forty-thousand dollars or fifty-four percent. And then our enterprise funds, which include the water sewer fund as well as the capital projects associated with our utilities, those are projected to be down two-and-a-half million dollars or ten-point-two percent. So, as Ms. Jones indicated, it is a proposed budget of ninety-two million, thirty-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars. Compared to the FY eighteen revised budget, that is a decrease of about six-point-eight million dollars or six-point-nine percent. For some extra comparison, though, the adopted budget for FY eighteen was ninety-two million, sixty-five thousand, eight forty-six. So, you can see we're very much on par with what you guys adopted last year. This slide shows a comparison of the projected revenues versus expenditures and you can see that the general fund, as it is required to, does balance at fifty-one-point-two million dollars. Special revenue funds will be transferring about sixty-seven thousand dollars to reserves. I can tell you that's our Hotel Motel Fund, which we'll talk about in some later detail. Capital project funds are projected to transfer about one-point-eight million dollars to reserves. That's our 2016 SPOST. And then the internal service fund, which again is our vehicle replacement fund, is projected to have revenues about a hundred thousand dollars more than the projected expenditures. The way that fund works is it's funded by transfers in from the general fund and the water sewer fund and we intentionally are bringing in one-hundred thousand of additional funds so that we can have those set aside for emergency vehicle purchases if needed throughout the next fiscal year. And then enterprise funds are projected to transfer about two million dollars to cash General fund revenues, this slide really shows the breakout, the grouping of those different revenue sources and far and away, the largest group of revenues is property taxes at twenty-eight-point-four million dollars. That's about fifty-six percent of our general fund revenues. And then behind that, the second-largest group of revenues is charges for services at nine-point-one million dollars, or about eighteen percent of the total revenues. And then you can kind of see how those other miscellaneous revenues help us arrive at that total number of fifty-one-point-two million dollars. So, the net property tax digest is what we use to sort of arrive at our property taxes for the year and based on information from the Cobb County Assessor, as well as an analysis of our own mix of residential and commercial properties, we are projecting an eight percent increase to our net tax digest for tax year 2018. And the Cobb Assessor relays to us that that is primarily due to a lot of new construction as we have seen in quite some detail tonight, as well as the commercial activity in and around the Cumberland area. The good news for us is that we've been able to continue to fund our general fund operations, even though they've been increasing a little bit, with the same low millage rate of eight-point-nine-nine mils. We've had that same millage rate since 2007 and we anticipate that continuing for FY nineteen. The other piece of good news here is that if you are a resident in Smyrna with a floating homestead exemption, you should not see an increase in your tax bill this year. On the expenditure side, general funds, again, we've kind of grouped these by large category. You can see that public safety makes up the, the biggest piece at thirteen-point-eight million dollars. That's about twenty-seven percent of our general fund budget. General government is the second-largest category at eleven-and-a-half million dollars. That's about twenty-three percent and that's kind of a catch-all category. It includes things like Parks and Recreation and the library and IT and finance and administration. Public Works is third at nine-and-a-half million dollars and then insurance and other benefits at eight-point-nine million dollars. And then you've got debt and capital projects rounding out the remainder. And again, expenditures do balance with projected revenues in the general fund. The city does operate its own E-911 Communications Center, so if you make a call, an emergency call in Smyrna City Limits, that call will be routed to our own dispatchers. We're proud of that fact and we have this fund set aside to sort of hold all of the operations associated with that. You can see from this top table on this slide that the main revenue source are the E-911 fees that we receive from phone companies. They collect those and then remit those to us. And then I'll also note in that revenues table, the transfer from the general fund. It's a small subsidy of about forty-seven million dollars, but that is necessary to sort of fill the gap between the revenues and what we need on the operation side. And for those operating expenditures, you can see that at the bottom, the breakout there between the salaries and benefits, as well as the other operating costs. And the E-911 Fund does balance. In the Hotel Motel Fund, the primary revenue source is the tax on room nights in Smyrna area hotels. Tourism is and continues to be the number-one industry in Cobb County and of course, the addition of SunTrust Park and the Battery has only added to that. In fact, this year, revenues are outpacing our projections by about ten percent. So, we are assuming at this point that we will finish the fiscal year up about nine or ten percent and we're also adding on another five percent projection for FY nineteen. On the expenditure side, you see a couple of big line items there. We do, by virtue of our agreement with the authority that manages the Cobb Galleria, have something in place where a fixed percentage of our revenues go to them to help with the marketing and promotion of tourism in our area. And then we have a fixed percentage of our revenues that go to, directly to the general fund. And what's left there, that about five-hundred thousand dollars, represents the operating costs for our Community Relations Department. So, altogether, this fund will contribute about sixty-seven thousand dollars to cash In the water sewer fund, we're projecting revenues to be nineteen-point-four million dollars, which is basically on par with what we budgeted for the prior year. This includes a growth factor of about three percent, but it also takes into account a reduction in the projected demand for water use compared to the FY eighteen budget. We have figured out that demand is pretty closely tied to weather, which can be unpredictable. So, after maybe overestimating that for FY eighteen, we've tempered our projections a little bit for the upcoming fiscal year. And you can see on the expense side, the largest group of expenses there is the purchase of wholesale water from the Cobb County Marietta Water Authority and that is a reduction from ten-point-seven million dollars budgeted in the current fiscal year to ten million dollars budgeted in nineteen. We're also projecting a smaller transfer to the water sewer CIP of about three million dollars and a smaller transfer to the general fund of about one-point-five million dollars. So, altogether then, we're expecting the water sewer revenues to outpace the expenditures by about two million dollars and that's good news. You'll recall a couple of years ago in FY seventeen, we had to tap our water sewer reserves to the tune of about four million dollars for the Jean-Claude Sanitary Sewer Outfall Project. So, we are eager to begin replenishing those funds. I expect we'll be able to start that this fiscal year and then in FY nineteen, we should see that continue. This schedule is the five-year schedule for our general fund capital improvement plan, or CIP for short, and you can see that we have budgeted one-point-five million dollars for FY nineteen. That is an increase of about five-hundred thousand dollars over FY eighteen. And to help us cover that difference, we are planning to use about three-hundred thousand dollars from previously committed funds. In prior years, we had a surplus. You guys, as mayor and council, decided to commit some of those surplus dollars to future capital needs and we are taking advantage of that now. We've got about four-hundred-twenty-five thousand dollars at our disposal and we're planning to use three-hundred thousand to fund this year's projects. FY nineteen is the only year that's actually budgeted, but you can see how that shakes out for the next four years after that as well. I'll spend the next three slides giving you a little bit more detail about those general fund capital projects specifically. In the general government category, we've got two-hundred-twelve thousand dollars budgeted for the replacement of some data storage units in the IT Department. We've got forty-six thousand dollars budgeted for window treatments at the library, forty-one thousand dollars for a desktop computer upgrades, which is something we budget for every year. And then in the public safety category, we've got two-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars budgeted for cardiac monitor replacements. The Smyrna Fire Department does provide advanced cardiac medical support as a standard service and we're proud of that fact. So, this is really the first of a two-year project to begin replacing eight cardiac In public works, we have a number of projects scheduled for FY nineteen. We will plan to spend about a hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars to resurface the parking lot at the police station. We've got a hundred-and-six thousand dollars budgeted for HVAC replacement and this is actually not to replace any one unit or, or replace the units in any one building, but it's kind of a catch-all project. We want to start putting funds in here so that as needed, we can have a pool of funds to tap into to replace aging HVAC units. We have seventy-six thousand dollars budgeted to replace underground sanitation cans. There are still a few neighborhoods in the city that are not well-suited for the rollout carts, so that's why we continue to have those. But you see sanitation carts is in here as well at forty-five thousand dollars. That's something we have a budget for every year. And sixty thousand dollars for an update to our fueling system at the Public Works Complex. We've also got thirty thousand dollars for some improvements to office space in Fire Station Four, twenty-five thousand dollars for an HVAC improvement at Fire Station One, and twenty thousand dollars for miscellaneous carpet replacement throughout the city as needed. Finally, in the Parks and Recreation category, we are planning to spend two-hundred thousand dollars to replace the playground at Taliesin Park. We've got a hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand dollars budgeted for restroom upgrades at the community center. That's wrapping up a multi-year project. And we're budgeting a hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars to replace the dive boards and the deck at Taliesin Pool. We've also got thirty thousand dollars for the repair and resurfacing of the six tennis courts at Taliesin Park, as well as twenty-five thousand dollars for resurfacing the gym floors at the community center. So, you add all this up and it's seventeen projects at a total cost of one-and-a-half million dollars. That was the most detail I'm going to go into in this presentation, by the way, so we'll hit the highlights after that. This is our enterprise fund, CIP. We do have capital projects in the general fund as well as in our enterprise funds. We budget for infrastructure and drainage projects every year. You see those amounts there for FY nineteen. We've also got a project to replace water meters and dials. It was actually started last year as a four-year project, but we have stretched that out now to five years in an effort to better match our staffing capacity. The other benefit is that we get to reduce the amount that we're budgeting each year, which helps our bottom line. So, you can see we're planning on just over three million dollars for FY nineteen in the water sewer CIP. The Stormwater Capital Projects Fund is projected to be just under one-point-two million dollars. That's actually an increase of about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars over where it was for FY eighteen and we've been able to do that because of the fifty cent per month increase that went into effect in January of this year. So, that's giving us some extra funds that we can put toward improvements this coming year and in the years to follow. And I will finish with this slide before turning it over to Ms. Robinson, but you can see our vehicle replacements and additions and the breakout of those on this slide. So, by department then, you see the number of vehicles that are planned, as well as the budget allocations for each. And this includes mostly replacement vehicles, but it does include two new vehicles as well, which I wanted to mention. It includes one new heavy rescue truck for the fire department. This will go at Fire Station Four to match the response capacity already in place at Fire Station One. So, then those medical trucks at Fire Station One and Four will handle all of the medical response calls throughout the city. And then we have one new vehicle also budgeted for the Community Development Department. In terms of replacement vehicles, I'll just mention a few, a few big ones. We have one new fire engine that's budgeted at five-hundred-twenty-five thousand dollars and we have two new sanitation trucks at two-hundred-ten thousand dollars each. We also had two police vehicles that were totaled this fiscal year that we will be replacing early in FY nineteen. So, you add it all together and we're looking at twenty-three new vehicles at a total cost of one-point-eight million dollars. For comparison, last year, we budgeted this vehicle replacement fund at one-point-two million dollars. So, it is an increase over six-hundred thousand dollars and just as we're doing for the general fund CIP, we're planning to use funds previously committed by this body to help us fund those projects in FY nineteen. So, we will use six-hundred thousand dollars of previously committed funds to help us acquire new vehicles in FY nineteen. And to talk about debt, I'll turn it over to the Finance Director.
Thank you. As Mr. Fennel mentioned a little while ago, we do have a triple-A bond rating, so I just wanted to highlight, highlight that again. We have total debt outstanding of a little over fifty-five million dollars. Good news, in fiscal year eighteen, we paid off our 2010 bonds. Those bonds were what we used to initially acquire the Smyrna Grove property and we were able to pay those off in fiscal year eighteen. So, that's, that's noteworthy for sure. For, for fiscal year nineteen, we have four million, two-seventy-one, seven-forty-two scheduled in debt service payments. We're going to pay a little over three-point-nine million of that from a general fund. Two-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand dollars is going to be paid by. $237,000 is going to be paid by title of alarm tax. That's going to pay the interest on our 2016 series bonds, which are the Wendy Hill Bonds. That money was previously put into the SPOS fund, and with the new rules that went into place with TBAT, we can dedicate this money to paying off the debt on those bonds. And we're also going to, we've also budgeted $100,000 to be used from funds previously committed. These are funds that are in the general fund. If you look at our financials on the bottom part, just like Jared talked about, the previously committed funds for CIP and for vehicle replacement, this is another designation that's on the general fund balance sheet that the council decided years ago to reserve for future debt. So we're planning to use $100,000 of that committed fund to fund the debt. We also have about $143,000 worth of capital lease payments for fiscal year '19. That is payments on our Munis software, which is our ERP software, which handles our financials, our purchasing and everything. And then we also have our fire truck, and this is actually our last year on our fire truck lease. So that will, sorry. So that will be coming off on fiscal year '19. Yes. Proposed fee changes. KSB has recommended removal of a, of a charge for coolant. We're no longer collecting coolant from refrigerators and air conditioners, and so the $35 charge for that service is going to be removed. Parks and Recreation has recommended several fee changes. Sorry. Remind me later. I'm trying to. It's causing, this is causing a problem with the, uh... Okay. Sorry about that? Okay. There are going to be fee, fee... Listen, the whole time Jared talked, we had nothing. But I started talking, and it, it all starts going crazy.
Jared is smooth.
I know. He was just, and then it gets to me, and it all is going south. All right. So we, there's a few fee changes for adult athletics. There's going to be fee increases for the pool passes. We're going to raise the kid, the kid passes from $3 to $5, the adult from $5 to $7. And then a key thing that changed from initial conversations is we are leaving the resident and non-resident rates in place for fiscal year '19. We also have sanitation rates. These are, the new rates went into effect March 1st, and so this is just updating the fee schedule to reflect those new rates that went into place with advanced disposal. We also had new water and sewer rates that went into effect January 1 and 2018, so this is just updating those to reflect those changes. Personnel. New personnel requests. We initially received 24 full-time and three part-time requests from the departments. We're recommending 11 new positions for, and they're all going to be budgeted at three-quarters of, for the fiscal year. Communication supervisor. 911 wants to go away from eight-hour shifts and go to 12-hour shifts. They're hoping that helps with retention. And to do that, they need an extra communication supervisor, so that's the first position listed. The recreation coordinator is a position that was, that was requested to help manage the summer camp programs that the city took over a couple of years ago. We had, previously had outsourced that and had a contractor coming in. We took that over this past summer and had great results, and so this position was requested to help deal with the new responsibilities related to that. Recycling. They have requested four crew workers and an additional truck driver. They would like to add another route, and they would like to put two crew workers on the back of each truck. We currently have a driver and a crew worker, and they would like to have two crew workers on each truck. So this adds two crew workers to the new route, and then it adds an additional crew worker to the two other routes. Sanitation, the same thing here. They would like to add two crew workers and a sanitation truck driver, so that's an additional route. And they're, they're requesting this based on the growth in Smyrna and the demand and hoping that this will, I guess, like lighten the load on the trucks and provide better service to the citizens. And then they've also requested a traffic engineer position, and this is going to be someone who's going to deal with the signs and, and help with the traffic division going And they're also going to begin the training for traffic signal maintenance duties to give a career path in that, in that department as well. We had eight reclassifications that were submitted. There's a $50,000 budget impact on these. One of these is a conversion of a, one part-time position to a full-time position. That is for our, the Smyrna Museum. That was a new part-time position that was added in the fiscal year '18 budget, and then it was requested to be reclassified to a full-time position for 2019. During fiscal year '18, we had a class and composition study. The results of that were 70 full-time salaries need to be increased to new minimums. And then to create a little bit of separation between those new minimums and employees that had been here, there's a 1% increase for all employees that was budgeted for this year. The total of the 70 full-time salaries being adjusted and that 1% increase is $283,000. Additionally, we have, we had a task force put together to, to look at what our employees wanted from the city, like some ways that we could retain them and, and keep, basically retain employees and attract new employees. So one of the things that came out of that task force was a initiative for longevity pay, and it rewards employees for their length of service. So that is an $84,000 impact to the fiscal year '19 budget. We also have a new program put into place to help retain public safety employees, our police officers specifically. And that is a graduated, it's a different amount based on your qualifications, and then after you're here for five years, there's an additional amount that gets paid out to you. So for fiscal year '19, that's a $32,000 impact to the budget. That was passed by council, I think, last month. Other highlights, there's a $100,000 transit feasibility study that's in this budget. This is a matching grant to leverage $400,000. This was part of the fiscal year '18 budget, but due to timing and just everything getting into place, that wasn't, that didn't happen in '18, so it's carried over and was rebudgeted in fiscal year '19. Also in this budget, parks maintenance is going to assume the mowing and maintenance of the athletic fields. That's going to result in a decrease in the cost from $121,000 to $102,000. Additionally, in this budget, we have a $225,000 museum renovation. As I mentioned earlier, this, we're upgrading that position from part-time to full-time, and then this money is in there to renovate the museum and get it up to, up to the standards that this council wants it to be at. We also have $25,000 in the budget for an annexation study, and this is just to inform us and to be able to prioritize our strategies as relates to annexation. We also have $25,000 budgeted for an organizational analysis, and this is just to review our structure, to review our job functions, and to make sure that we're where we need to be as an organization. This is a follow-up to the class and compensation study that we did in fiscal year '18. We also have $36,000 in here for the preservation of cemeteries. This is for Daniel Cemetery and Zion Cemetery. Y'all approved adoption of those at the last meeting, I believe. And so this is in here to, to get those, you know, to, to get those up to standards. I'm not sure, that final plan hasn't been finalized and developed yet, but this is in here, after y'all hear that, to make sure we can do what we need to do with those two I know this is a lot of information, so there are a couple of ways that you can get to the budget book, which has all the detailed information included. You can go to the Smyrna website, smyrnacity.com. If you click on the finance tab up in the right-hand side, it drops down and gives you the finance department and open data. If you click on finance department, there is another, there's a subsequent dropdown that gives you the budget information. So that's one way you can get to it. That's similar to how you got to it last year. The other way is under the spotlight section of the website, which is a little further down on the page. There's a direct link to it that says fiscal year 2019 proposed budget, and that'll take you directly into the proposed budget without having to go through a couple of different tabs. Always, if you, if you have questions or need help finding it, you can contact anyone in the finance department, and we'll be able to direct you to where you need to get the Tonight, obviously, is our first formal budget presentation. We have a public meeting on Wednesday from 12 to 1:00. It's going to be right here in chambers, and we'll be answering any questions that might come up. And then we have the adoption of the budget scheduled for the meeting on June 18th. So that concludes the budget presentation.
All right. Is there any questions of staff? I know that this is a public hearing, and I will ask if there's any, anyone here that wants to ask anything that's concerning to the budget. We are glad to have you now, if this is, portion of the agenda, this public hearing Mr. Fennel?
Mr. Mayor, it's humbling to have the privilege and the pleasure to work with talented professionals and a super management team that runs the city, and to work with the council that understands the value of making sure that we're dutiful in our preparation, management, and ongoing planning for budgets and our future. I am, I'm thrilled to be a small part of the team that allows us to deal with this. We have a couple of other public hearings. We do take public comment, and if you want, who are watching or who want to comment to any members of council, we'll be happy to share your question if you don't want to be so public with your request. But our job is to serve you, to make sure that we're properly spending and managing the resources you've given us, and we're mindful of that every day. With that, Mr. Mayor, I am welcome to conclude the public hearing.
All right. So that concludes that. We, we are set to adopt June the 18th. Is that correct? Okay. All right. Item seven is commercial building permits. We have none. Item eight is consent agenda. Ms. Jones, will you please read the consent agenda for council's approval?
We have two consent agenda items. Item A, approval of the May 7, 2018 mayor and council meeting minutes. Item B, approval to close Parkwood Road between Bank Street and Pine Hill Drive, Sunday, June 10, 2018, between 3:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. for a neighborhood block party organizer Camma Mannion, subject to the police department approving application.
Your motion to approve the consent agenda. Second, motion is second. All those in favor, the motion, please vote. It's proof 6-0. Item nine is committee reports. We'll start with Mr. Derek Norton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you again to all of the participants in our Citizens Academy and to our staff member, Ashley Omens, for putting that together. These people took a lot of time out of their schedules over the last several weeks to learn more about the city and get engaged, and I think it's a great process, and I look forward to upcoming classes of the Citizens Academy. With that, I yield.
A very nice Memorial Day, and maybe we won't have rain for a change, because I'm getting a little tired of the rain. But anyway, have a nice holiday.
Ms. Blackburn.
Yes, Mayor, thank you very much. A few things, I won't be very long. I was excited on Friday night to support our Campbell High School Spartans. They did their varsity scrimmage, called it the white-out game, and I do believe that they did win. I was not able to stay the whole night, but it was really exciting, so I'm looking forward to their football season. And I left there and went over to Fire Station Number One to participate in what they called We Will Remember Night. It's in recognition of Mental Health Awareness Month. Our firefighters pulled the fire truck and their emergency vehicles out. They turned on their emergency lights for one minute, and I stood with a candle. And, and again, it was just, just to recognize and let those individuals who, public service personnel affected with mental health know that we still remember. And third, I just love it when I ask individuals like the young teenagers in our community to come out and see what our city council is all about. And of course, tonight, you heard about our Citizens Academy. We had several, several individuals that participated in that, so we say thank you. But I cannot believe she actually is still sitting out there. Jalen Taylor, who just graduated from high school, I asked her parents if she could come tonight just to, you know, see what our city council meeting was about and just to, that type of thing. And you're here, I'm so excited. So, and you just graduated, from what I understand. Congratulations, and you're going to New York University. You go, girl. Thanks for coming out, I appreciate it. And I just ask all of our community to come out and see what we're doing here, and I have some people that are probably watching us, et cetera. So with that, Mayor, I yield, and have a happy Memorial Day, y'all.
Mr. Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to encourage everyone to come out Monday for the Memorial Day ceremony, beginning at 9:30 here in the downtown Smyrna. If you don't have anything else to do, please come out and attend. With that, I yield.
Ms. Wilkinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of announcements to make. One announcement I would like to make is to let people know that part of the construction has started on Wendy Hill Road today. They started the relocation, the AT&amp;T duck relocation began today, and it is required to replace their existing duck as it, at its present location will be in conflict with the future through lane installation for the roadway. The duck relocation spans from Atlanta Road to South Cub Drive and will be placed in the outer eastbound lane of Wendy Hill Road. This work will be conducted in 1,000-foot sections and begin at the intersection of Atlanta Road and Wendy Hill Road. Through this construction zone, the middle turn lane will be used as an eastbound lane for the most part to provide two lanes in each direction. In order to expedite this project in hopes of a completion date at or before the next school year session, while traffic volume is at a minimum, the city will allow modification of work hours and work days and nights. The increased times and days will be monitored so as not to have a huge impact on residents and businesses adjacent to the work zone. It is the city's intent to limit the amount of impact and may have to adjust AT&amp;T's hours and days to establish a reasonable impact. Okay, so wanted to let people know about that. Mary Moore from the library has asked me to also announce what's going on at the library. The last day of school is Wednesday, so remember to stop by the library this week to sign up for the summer reading program. The theme this year is music, and the library will have lots of sound and music-themed activities, books, and events. They will also have musical instruments available for checkout starting this Friday, May 25. The new collection is called Music Makers, and it includes a variety of string and percussion instruments like drums, maracas, ukuleles, bells, and more. You may check out a music kit for one week, and they ask that families limit themselves to one music maker kit at a time. You can visit the smyrna-librarian.com for more details about the summer reading program and the Music Makers collection. I'd also like to announce that there's going to be a Memorial Day service at the Memorial Park, and that will be on Monday, May 28. The service begins promptly at 9:30 a.m., and it's at the 20th Century Veterans Memorial right on King in the downtown. The speakers are going to be Gunnery Sergeant Victoria Turney, U.S. Marine Corps retired, and also Lieutenant General Steve Arnold, the U.S. Army retired. And also, I'd like to let, everybody knows that it's an election tomorrow, and there is a Ward 6 candidate running. Terry, you'll probably talk about that, but I also wanted to let folks know, district, or Ward 5 falls into U.S. Ward Five falls into U.S. House District 41, and there are three candidates running for that seat. So I encourage everyone to get out and vote. Thanks so much.
Mr. Fennel.
Mr. Mayor, I have three brief things. It's summer. Kids are going to be everywhere, so please help drive cautiously and carefully and be respectful of that. Secondly, I want to congratulate the graduating classes. There are a lot of people meeting their milestones now, and they're about to head off to college or to do things in the community. But the sports community that we have in Smyrna is very active. These kids are going to start playing summer sports, and we're going to see them everywhere. Just be mindful of that, and do help get these kids involved. And then finally, I want to acknowledge the May issue of Georgia Trend Magazine features the number-two employer in Smyrna CEO, and that is Doug Hertz. That business is United Distributors. It's the second-largest employer in the city. He was recognized the 2018 Most Respected Business Leader. He and his wife, Lila, in 2017, were named philanthropists of the year as well. He's part owner of the Falcons. He's third-generation family company, and as the second-to-last employer, we're very proud to have him for every business owner and business operator in the state of Georgia recognize that this is the most respected CEO. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I yield.
Ms. Jones.
No report.
Stand, Ruth.
Just want to remind everyone that Citizens with Disabilities is one of our subgroups as part of the Vision Plan, and that meeting takes place tomorrow evening at 6:30 p.m. at the community center. If you have any questions, feel free to email me.
And sitting in for Scott Cochran, who is in Hawaii, is Jeffrey Tucker, who is -- I'm sure he's very appreciative of Scott picking this meeting so you could be here till almost 10 o'clock at night.
It's been really delightful.
Such as the young lady in the audience who, obviously, is being punished for something. Let her go. Let her go home. Anything, Jeffrey?
No report, Your Honor. I would like to encourage the mayor and council to check out some ukuleles and maracas from the library, then.
I've got a ukulele at the house. Anything from the city clerk's office? You're kidding.
You want to hear about the election, right?
Well, I think we already have, but go ahead.
We do have a special election for Ward Six. The precinct will be at Campbell Middle School, so everyone in Ward Six will vote at Campbell Middle School. We tagged on to the primary, so there are all -- there are state and county elections going on, so all the precincts will be open. Ward Six will vote at Campbell Middle School. Thank you.
Thank you. We do not have show cause hearing, citizens input. One person signed up, Alec Bakri, 3459, Shawnee Trail. Comments? See here? Then that -- I declare this meeting adjourned at 9:50. I missed it. Is that something for me, Rusty? Can I help you?